Good evening. It is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, March 13th, 2017 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. I think we all survived the snowmageddon yesterday. I'm glad everyone's here. Staff, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate everyone's efforts this evening. The first item this evening is the adoption of tonight's agenda. The agenda has been posted online and posted also in the lobby. Commissioners, any changes or adjustments to this evening's agenda?
No changes.
None from Commissioner's staff. Any changes to the agenda?
No, no changes.
From staff. Hearing no changes, I would stand for motion. Moved by Commissioner Levy. Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening is the approval of the February 13th, 2017 Planning Commission minutes. Commissioners, do you have any changes or adjustments to the draft minutes?
It may have been my commuter, uh, computer, Mr. Chairman, but I think there was a duplication of some pages in the minutes, and I'm not sure.
Commissioner Levy, I did not, when I printed it, I did not have that.
Okay.
So I think we're okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments for the background, for the minutes? Staff, any changes for the minutes?
No changes.
Hearing no changes, Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Walter.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. That brings us to our third item this evening. Our third item is an application of Chris Burdick for a variance from Shoreland Overlay District Water Quality Standards to allow the 2015 Lake Shore setback variance to remain effective without requiring the natural vegetated buffer strip to be installed along the shoreline of Crystal Lake for the property located at 735 Crystal Lake Road East. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Garros. Ms. Garros, welcome back. We appreciate your time this evening, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd just like to note for the commission that we do have the applicant here this evening. Both Chris and Terry Burdick are here. And then Mike Hughes, I believe, is Mike here? Yep. Mike Hughes is also here and has indicated that he will be interested in addressing the Planning Commission this evening. As far as the variance application is concerned, with this type of application for variance, the principal finding that the Planning Commission needs to make is, is there practical difficulty to support granting the variance? And practical difficulty relates to something that is unique with respect to the property itself, a unique characteristic. Something that you want to look at, is the variance being requested consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance? Is there something that, where this property stands out and should for a particular reason or rationale not need to meet the criteria for which the variance is granted? So those are the items that the Planning Commission will need to look at. As the report indicates, this application actually was heard, there was a similar application heard in 2015 for this site where Lake Shore variance, driveway width variance, impervious surface variance were granted. With those variance applications, the specific variances were indicated in your report and are up on the screen. And the application materials included a site survey and also preliminary plat, which showed the 20-foot landscape buffer. And the requirement of the ordinance is specifically that in order to qualify, if you will, for a Lake Shore setback variance, impervious surface variance, something having to do with the Shoreland District, that there are water management standards that need to be met, and a buffer yard is one of those requirements. The applicant was asked before this came to Planning Commission and Council to modify the plans to show the buffer yard, and those were shown on the drawing to the right. The dark stippled pattern is where the landscape buffer is. There is also a specific plant list that was approved for those materials, and the plat also showed, and this is just a larger picture showing where that 20-foot buffer was identified. Once the variances were granted, the applicant did submit their building permit application, and that permit application was approved based on these approved plans showing the buffer. Later last year, in order to finalize the building permit, the process is that all of the review staff go out and take a look at the site. In this case, for buffers, those are administered through our Natural Resources Department, and Daryl Jacobson is our Natural Resource Manager, and he is here this evening. He noted that the buffer was not in, and advised the applicant that they would need to install the buffer. The applicant does not want to install the buffer, and they are here this evening for variance to do, to get that approved. A code enforcement case has been opened on this and is pending the result ultimately of the action of the City Council on this variance application. Yep, did submit a number of materials and information which were provided in your packet. They provided a landscape plan showing the extent of landscaping that they have done on the property. They also provided a survey of existing conditions so that again you can see what improvements they have made on the property. And in addition to that, I'm not going to go through all the various photographs, but there were a lot of different photographs that were submitted. This is showing the applicant's property both before. They made all of the improvements, that would be on the left side. And then the right side shows what the improvements look like or will look like in the summer or spring. With this application, staff finds that there is not a practical difficulty that is due to the ordinance. Their, the request is not consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Staff is recommending denial of the application because there are no practical difficulties that have been demonstrated. This application has been reviewed by the Park and Natural Resource Commission. They also recommended denial. Their indications at the meeting were that the city spends a lot of time and dollars in water management, surface water management and other management, and that property owners along the lakes should need to follow theirs as well. In addition, this was submitted to the Department of Natural Resources, and they are also recommending denial based on no demonstrated practical difficulties. And with that, I can address questions, and as I said, the applicant's here. Mr. Jacobson is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, for the benefit of our viewing and listening audience, would you be kind enough to please indicate the purpose of the vegetated buffer strip?
Yes.
Thank you.
The purpose of that vegetated buffer strip is to provide for, excuse me, lost the word there, is to provide for stormwater management. It does a couple of things. In the Shoreland District, that is the area that's basically within 1,000 feet of the lake, there are a number of standards that the state has set through the Department of Natural Resources to protect not only the quality of surface waters, but also the habitat and just the entire Shoreland area. And the buffer strip, that particular language came out of, when the city adopted its Shoreland ordinance a number of years ago, the city was allowed some deviations or changes to the state model ordinance based on the kind of development we have in the city. And in exchange for that, the city agreed to put in a water quality standard so that when there are variances requested, such as Lake Shore setback variances or impervious surface variances from the Shoreland District standards, that in return, the buffer area is installed along with, we have impervious surface requirements as well, and that those are installed to help improve water quality throughout the, throughout the city.
And if I may follow up, Ms. Garros, this is not unique to Crystal Lake. I think all other Lake Shore properties have to do the same, right?
You are correct. It would apply to all of the lakes in the city and then also within 300 feet of Minnesota River.
And as I think you said earlier, it's a state requirement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh, for your questions. Commissioner Levy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, are there other properties that had, that have a variance from the standard on the lakes within Burnsville?
I did not find any that had a variance, with the exception of, I believe there was one described in the attachment where the variance was decided that they did not need a buffer yard due to a retaining wall situation. But other than that, all of the other setback and Shoreland variances have had this buffer requirement or have already had the buffer in place as part of the information that was available through the applications.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Garros?
I have just one quick question, Mr. Chair. Deb, is it, in creating the plan in 2003, was the vegetated buffer the only, um, was that the, was that the only consideration as far as preventing runoff, or were there other scenarios that would prevent runoff outside of just a buffer?
There were other things. I mean, the whole Shoreland ordinance, you have to take kind of a global look at it. The Lake Shore standards, Burnsville was allowed to have smaller Lake Shore standards because the, the standards of the state model ordinance really for, you know, in some cases called for two-acre lot sizes. Burnsville already had primarily been developed all around the Lake Shore, so that wouldn't make any sense. So we were granted some flexibility in terms of lot size. Lot size overall, the intent of that, to have larger lot sizes, is to have more pervious area, again, to filter out sediments and the like related to water quality. So there were differences that were granted in different aspects of that Shoreland ordinance.
In, in any of those, and I know I'm asking you to go back a little ways, but it seems like the justification here is that the grading has been reduced and there's been other things implemented closer to the house to prevent the runoff. Was that ever discussed? Or is that part of a boilerplate buffering process through, you know, a state level or even a metro level as far as considerations for?
There are other things that can be done and that people do, and I believe that the applicant has done, but that buffer yard standard is something that is fairly unique and straightforward. And that is something that needs to be in place based on what the DNR worked on with the city, their recommendations, the PNRC, and, and from city staff.
Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Any other questions? Deb, or Ms. Garros, I think this, we, this doesn't require a public hearing, but we, I can start with the, okay. So I think at this point, I'd like the applicant to come up, and Commissioners could have questions for the applicant, and then we'll, I'll get to a resident, and then we'll work through Natural Resources, if that's okay? If the applicant could step up, I'd appreciate it. Welcome back, Mr. [inaudible]. If you could, yeah, right there. If you could give us your name, I know it's, for the record, give us your name and address for the record.
Chris and Terry Burdick. We live at 735 Crystal Lake Road in Burnsville. And thank you, first of all, for hearing and considering our, our variance request. Before I get started, I want to say that I don't have any problems with anybody at the City of Burnsville. Everybody's been very accommodating to work with right from the get-go with, with Chris Selena and throughout the whole entire build process. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna start here. We've got, bear with me, I'm not a public speaker, but I've got some information I think you'll find helpful when, when considering your ruling on this. I'll start right here. I'm sure that you have reviewed the additional information we provided Deb last week, which is in addition to the information we provided last fall. We reviewed the Planning Commission Agenda Report as well. Based on that information, we have additional facts to present to you tonight. I first want to reiterate the emphasis and emphasize the lack of information we received at the initial meeting we had with Chris Selena, as well as the building official and one other female city employee. At that meeting, there was no mention of a Shoreline buffer requirement. We were asked to build no closer to the street, no closer to the lake, as well as meet the 25% impervious requirement. With that information from the meeting, we chose to move forward and purchase the property. We also designed our home to meet the criteria that was asked of us at the meeting. I'm not sure how a person looking to purchase a Lake Shore property in Minnesota, specifically in the City of Burnsville, would know that there was a 20-foot natural vegetated buffer requirement on all variances. Keep in mind, when we toured the lake by boat in 2014, before we had the initial meeting with the city, not one home on Crystal Lake had the vegetated buffer, and now knowing that two of those homes with our same variance did not have the 20-foot buffer. We can't imagine anyone looking to purchase a Lake Shore property with the purpose of a teardown knowing they would have to plant a 20-foot buffer across their entire backyard. We boat frequently on Lake Minnetaka, where there are number, where there are numerous tear downs each year. We have never seen a Lake Shore property with a 20-foot buffer. All of our inspiration pictures of what we wanted our shoreline to look like are from our outings on Lake Minnetaka.
And I have, I've just had these just for our own personal use, so I'm not sure if any of you, this is just pictures either I saw on the Parade of Homes or on, on boating on Minnetaka that, I mean, none of these homes, it's, it's just not common, so I don't know. Okay, sorry, we're doing this a little archaic, leave it.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, Deb. Okay, so when we applied for our first variance in 2015, the survey submitted had no mention of the 20-foot buffer. After the application, there was correspondence between Daryl and Jacobson Engineering to add the 20-foot, foot buffer. The first time I heard of this was at the original planning committee, like tonight, and I understood it to be during the construction process. This is very common to me, I didn't mention, but for, for home builders. Everywhere we build, regardless if it's near water, we have to provide erosion control. In the city packet dated 4/27/2015, under engineering considerations, it states, "The primary concern of the project is erosion control being that is adjacent to Crystal Lake. There will be temporary erosion measures placed and a 20-foot vegetated buffer strip will be established. The erosion control that was submitted meets the city's stormwater management plan. The wording of these 4/27/2015 notes lead me to believe this was during construction only." Also on the 4/27/2015 packet under landscaping, it said, "We have been working with the National Resources staff and are proposing a suitable vegetated buffer." We at no time had any contact with anyone from the Natural Resources staff and didn't start working on our landscape plan until after mid-construction in July of 2015. We had four landscape plans drawn from four different landscape companies from July 2015 through July 2016. In reading the, the City of Burnsville's variance code on preserving water quality 3B, we are referencing Jeanne Skanky's email dated 3/16/2015. It states, "It looks like this home's shoreline setback will be determined by setback averaging, and rebuilds still need to meet setbacks or provide hardship regardless of whether they are improving over existing conditions or meeting other requirements or not. Are they meeting their shoreline setback? Are they routing stormwater away from the lake? We request that any runoff that's diverted toward the lake be mitigated with some sort of shoreline planting or, or other landscaping to intercept flow. Strong reminder to use adequate sediment and erosion control measures during construction." Ms. Skanky's comments, "Some sort of shoreline planting or other landscaping to intercept flow" can be interpreted that there are alternate ways to intercept flow. Our home does not have rain gutters, so all the rain from our roof falls into large rain garden-type landscape beds with amended soil. Organic mulch, 32 shrubs, 98 perennials, and some of the 22 trees we added
Sorry.
are in the beds that surround our entire home, not to mention our shoreline improvements. These are all alternative ways to intercept flow. When we Google the definition of a rain garden, Wikipedia states, "A rain garden is a planted depression or hole that allows rainwater runoff from impervious urban areas like roofs, driveways, walkways, parking lots, and compacted lawn areas. The opportunity to be absorbed. Furthermore, we improved the grade of the rear yard from 19% slope to a 6% slope posing no threat of erosion. We improved our Shoreline Boulder Wall and have a three-foot rock landscape bed that precludes the Shoreline Wall to intercept any additional water flow. Also, we have one of the few lots on Crystal Lake that meets the 25% impervious, thus allowing more ground space for stormwater runoff to be absorbed. Our soil type is predominantly sand, which also helps with absorption." Next, I'd like to discuss the Planning Commission Agenda Report. I've already touched base on a number of points, including my not understanding of the 20-foot buffer ordinance by the City of Burnsville. In the agenda, under variance consideration, it states that "My intent for the variance is to view mowed lawn rather than natural vegetation." This could not be further from the truth nor intention. The variance is requested because we have mitigated our lot through landscaping and dramatic grade improvements to prevent stormwater runoff into Crystal Lake and ensure its water quality. The pictures we provided, and more importantly, the as-built survey, is proof of the improvements we have made. Every improvement we have made to our property has been in the best interest of owning and living on a lake. Under the planning considerations, it references the DNR resources sheet. This only refers to rivers and steep banks. None of this particular information is relevant to the type of property we have. Our property is not steep like they are referencing, nor are we on a river. Notes from a January 10th, 2017 email from Ms. Skanky, where she comments that a granted variance would set a bad precedent, then, then allow that mitigation go unmet. Clearly, her comments were prior to seeing pictures of our yard in as-built survey, showing that our lot has been mitigated to prevent stormwater runoff and preserve water quality. I received a call last fall from a city intern telling me that our yard was not in compliance. I was caught off guard, and I asked him what he was talking about. He referenced the ordinance pertaining to the vegetated buffer. I told him we maintained the buffer throughout construction and had no idea it was to be part of the final landscape. He called the next week to set up a time to meet with him and Daryl Jacobson at our home. During the meeting at our home, which is also the first time I've met or talked to Daryl, he told us that all homes with a Lake Shore variance require a 20-foot buffer. I argued with Daryl because I knew this wasn't true. Our neighbor two doors down has a variance, and it does not have a 20-foot buffer on his survey. After the meeting with Daryl, we requested from the city all Lake Shore variances since the 2003 vegetated buffer ordinance was put in place by the City of Burnsville. After visiting and taking pictures of all these homes with variances like ours, it was clear that none of the homes had a 20-foot vegetated buffer covering their shorelines. In fact, some of the variances had no mention of the buffer on their survey at all. In attachment for tonight's meeting regarding these other variances, we've read the staff notes with interest. We also revisited some of the homes to gather additional information. We have found that none of the homes have a required buffer. It is clear that exceptions are made to this ordinance. Alright, property number one, 50 Carriage Lane, staff notes. Buffer yard already installed and noted in variance. A pictometry photo was provided by city staff. We see an exception was made to have a buffer on the side yard instead of the shoreline. Property two, 1309 Keller Road, staff notes. Finding a fact indicate buffer will be installed. Pictometry is inconclusive. From our site visit picture, I can't tell that any vegetated buffer was installed. It just, it's just natural. I don't think they did anything to it. Property three, the lot was never developed. Property four, 1317 Crystal Lake Road East, staff notes. Buffer rain garden approved with 1995 variance, 2004 variance, no buffer yard requirement because existing rock raining top wall precludes shoreline buffer. We revisited this home on Saturday.
You have a picture of that?
Yeah.
If this home satisfies the Lake Shore ordinance, then the Lake Shore improvements on our property should certainly satisfy the ordinance as well. Also, if the spruce trees planted in the home's side yard that are encompassed with the edging and mulch constitutes a rain garden, then the rain garden landscape beds that surround our entire home should satisfy the ordinance as well. Another thing to note is this home has rain gutters and sits extremely close to the lake. Property five, 377 Maple Island Road, two different variances, staff notes. First variance was never constructed. Second variance, staff notes. Buffer, buffer was installed at, at the time of the building permit final. Property sold to a different owner. Pictometry indicated buffer strip is now flat beach fire pit area. Our fact finding on this home, that is if the buffer was in fact installed, it is okay to remove it after it has been inspected. On this particular property as well, the, the new homeowner didn't do anything to the property because we, we looked at the pictures on Zillow when it was listed, and this is what it looked like from the original owner. Property six, 150 Carriage Lane, staff notes. Applicant agreed to create 20-foot natural buffer by installing shrubs in two levels of walls. Will also install three rain barrels to capture and infiltrate roof runoff. Pictometry meets- to capture and infiltrate roof runoff. Pictometry meets the approved buffer plan. Our fact finding is that this property has an unusable backyard with a severe drop-off to the water and very few shrubs were present. It appears that exceptions were made on this property as well." Property seven, 1805 Victoria Lane, staff notes, "Approval required buffer restoration plan satisfying 100% of the required area prior to release of the building permit. Pictometry meets approved buffer plan. We found this home has a vegetated buffer to the side of the lot, as the city staff noted. Pictures from our site visit show there is no buffer at all on the rear lakeside of the home. Also, note that this home sits extremely close to the water. Clearly, an exception has been made." Property eight, 735 Crystal Lake Road East, staff notes, "Building permit and variance plans show required 20-foot buffer to be installed. New variance application under review. This is our home. All the improvements made to our grading, landscaping, and boulder shoreline retaining wall should certainly meet the buffer ordinance based on all the exceptions granted to all other lakeshore variances. Keep in mind that property four's staff notes state, "No buffer yard required because existing rock retaining wall precludes the shoreline buffer." How could our property be considered any differently than property number four? Even if the city doesn't want to take into account any of the other improvements we have made to our property, in consideration, our shoreline improvement alone should meet the same variance approval as property four." Property nine, 755 Crystal Lake Road East, staff notes, "Buffer not needed as there was no lakeshore setback variance needed and no additional impervious." These staff notes are not consistent with the variance ordinance terminology. Not only that, the homeowner told us he argued and refused to have the 20-foot buffer added to his survey when he was instructed to do so. This home does not meet any setback, front, side, or rear, or impervious requirements. Property 10, 13813 Frontier Lane, staff notes, "Variance reasonable home footprint reduced. Reduced impervious surface 38.1% to 30%. Meet 30-foot front and 10-foot side. Will add required buffer, will add required lakeshore buffer. Pictometry meets the approved buffer plan. Note, this home was not given to us when we requested all of the homes that had a shoreline variance last fall. Upon a site visit yesterday, we took pictures that clearly shows what was approved as a lakeshore buffer. And what was approved does very little to prevent stormwater runoff or erosion." We have contacted the following cities in Dakota County, cities surrounding Lake Minnetaka, and the city of Prior Lake to inquire on situations like ours where a lakeshore variance is required. We found that none of these cities that I spoke with have a vegetated buffer ordinance in place like the City of Burnsville. Planning departments I talked with include Lakeville, Prior Lake, Mound, Minatrista, Spring Park, Wayzata, Orno, Shorewood, Excelsior, Farmington, and Rosemont. I left messages but have not heard back from Apple Valley, Eagan, Inver Grove Heights, or Cannon Falls. Brad Nielsen, who's the planner from the city of Shorewood, stated, "Why would anyone want to build on a lake if they had to cover 20 feet of their shoreline with a vegetated buffer?" My point with all of these calls is to prove how would anyone purchasing a lakeshore property know they would be required to add a permanent 20-foot vegetated buffer? In a brochure that we've found prepared by an agency called Minnesota Waters dated 2009, it states, "A vegetated buffer of native plants is an effective, attractive alternative to riprap a collection of stones used as an embankment or retaining walls." The word "alternative" means just that. Protecting our natural resources is not new to us. We both grew up on dairy farms in southeast Minnesota and utilized water preservation methods starting in the 1970s, where we left the grass buffer strips adjacent to creeks on our property, as well as contour farming methods on hilly land. We also had some of our land enrolled in the Conservation Reserve Program known as CRP land. As a builder, I deal with erosion control to prevent sediment runoff on a daily basis. Being a lakeshore property owner, we have put a great deal of thought and time into improving our property to prevent stormwater runoff and erosion into Crystal Lake. This all being said, we are very aware of protecting our state's natural resources and water quality. In the brochure provided by the city titled Shoreland and Floodplain Variance Guidance Series, it states, "Under the headings, support the decision with finding of fact. The local government should make findings of fact. Findings of fact is a legal term for simply saying the reasons used to support a decision. Findings are very important. To be legally defensible, findings should not just state legal criteria have been met, but explain how the criteria are met. The purpose for making findings is to bridge the gap between facts and an ultimate decision. Variance findings should explain how relevant facts support or do not support the legal criteria described above. The DNR's formula for variance findings will help guide the development of good findings. An example of good findings was developed with the formula to demonstrate what good findings might look like. The good findings, if they were done on this variance request, were based off of our 2015 original variance request, and they were not reevaluated with our current as-built survey, and to my knowledge, no one ever came out to our property to evaluate the grade, landscape, and shoreline improvements." Continuing with what is stated in the Finding of Facts brochure, "Discrimination and prejudice should not play a role in deciding on a variance request, nor should a poll of those attending a public meeting. General statements of support or opposition should not be used as a finding of fact. Statements made by the public that are concrete and factual relating to the criteria can be useful in developing findings. Findings should be more than a mere recitation of statutory criteria. They must provide the factual basis that leads to a rational conclusion." We are not here to be difficult, but to be treated like all other homeowners who have had lakeshore variances in the City of Burnsville. We wanted to be very thorough in rebutting the agenda report prepared by the city staff because they are recommending denial of our variance request. Their recommendation is based on the original survey. Our current variance request should be based off the as-built survey as well as grade, landscape, and shoreline improvements. In actuality, all lakeshore variances like ours in the City of Burnsville have had exceptions made so their property meets the ordinance without installing a 20-foot vegetated buffer strip, as I stated in the planning agenda by, as stated in the planning agenda by city staff. So this is what city staff stated, "The issue is due to the desire of the applicant after the fact not to install the buffer. This accusation is insulting. I understood the buffer to be present during construction and not part of the final landscape. All we want is to be able to use our lakeshore like every other homeowner on Crystal Lake, for that matter, any Minnesota lake homeowner. It appears as though we are being singled out. As I said at the beginning, if we had been told that a 20-foot vegetated buffer would be required, we never would have purchased this property. With all of the additional facts we have provided you tonight, we cannot imagine how or why our variance request would be denied. Thank you again for your time and consideration."
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation. Hank, don't go anywhere.
No, we're going to stay.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Burdick, for that presentation. That was very helpful. On the original planning meeting where this was approved for construction on April 27, 2015, in the engineering considerations, it does make reference to the buffer, but I just want to understand your thought on that. You were understanding that as...
Is during construction.
During construction.
Yep. To be honest with you, all my looking around, I mean, it's fantastic Burnsville has something like this, but it really should be, there should be alternate ways to get around it. No one else in the state is implementing this. And even as you was aboard, I'm sure somewhere you were thinking, "Why would you purchase a lake property and then throw 20 feet of vegetation behind it?" And a good example of your vegetation is what you have planted out in front of the city buildings out here. And, you know, and Daryl will come up and argue that it's, you know, it'll hold erosion or whatever better. I don't know if it will or not, but when you have a pretty flat lot, I don't think it's going to erode into the lake. And when you have a lakeshore boulder wall like we have, it's not going anywhere. But yes, I understood that to be during construction, and it's what we do everywhere.
I have something to say. I believe Deb said that it was a state. Nowhere in any information that was provided by the city, nor of all of our researching over the weekend, we couldn't find one, one fact.
There's not even one fact by the DNR that says it has to be implemented the way that you have it.
Right. It's implying, it's implying that it should be a choice, a choice by homeowners. It's not implying you need to have people do this. We couldn't find any. Otherwise, we could have brought that, but we, there was nothing. So that is, we don't think that's a correct fact that Deb had said during her. So unless, unless you can prove that.
Okay, we'll, we'll get, we'll work through that. I appreciate. Commissioner Workman, do you have other questions for the applicant?
Just one more. As a home builder, have you built on lakeshore property before?
Yeah, Marion, Prior Lake, Mound, and Minatrista.
And in doing any of that, you've never run into anything similar to that?
The City of Burnsville is the only one with this ordinance that we have found that has this, and that's why Chris brought up and called all of those cities.
Did I mention Lake Marion? Or Lake Marion as well, right?
And Prior Lake.
So anyways, Crystal Lake has two sides. It's got a Lakeville side and a Burnsville side. You know, it doesn't exist on, this code does not exist on the Lakeville side.
Thank you.
Commissioner Workman, other questions?
Some more questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions of the applicant?
Mr. Workman.
Commissioner Benke.
To expand on that question, in the variance that was granted, the buffer is listed, you say that you thought it was for construction only?
Correct.
How do you then answer a question regarding the comment that's in that, that buffer comment that said that a trail through the buffer was allowed? Did you think that that trail was going to be during construction then, or did you think that was something else?
You know what, to be honest with you, I didn't even, even notice a trail through the buffer, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
And one thing to state too, we do a ton of building. Jacobson Engineering handles all of our engineering variances and all that type of stuff. I don't even go to the meetings. So I should have paid more attention to this because it was my property, and, you know, I take responsibility for that. But that's obviously why we're now applying for a different variance.
I guess that was actually my next question, because as a builder, you're aware of what due diligence is and how a variance works.
Yep, yep.
I know Brad well. I'm working on with a project him myself, and I guess, I'm sure he did make that comment. I guess the thing to keep in mind is that the City of Shorewood does not administer their shoreline. The Lake Minnetaka Conservation District and the Minnaha Creek Watershed District do. So he might not be privy to the...
Well, but that being said, I can tell you, because we have a vote on Minnetaka, there's not, there's not one of these situations going on. And they tear down 30 homes a year, and we're not talking little homes, they're monsters.
Had we, because all of this started in the fall after the intern came out, it was October, my plan was to go around and take tons of pictures of Lake Minnetaka properties, and it was just too late in the season. Otherwise, I could have showed you...
And we know it doesn't pertain to Lakeville, but I'm just trying to show the point, or to Burnsville, but, but it's showing the point that Burnsville is the only one that is enforcing an ordinance like this, is the point I'm trying to make. And it's not common knowledge. You probably all know it because you're on a commission board. I don't know it, and I would, I would recommend, no matter what the decision is, there's got to be something big and bold when somebody comes in and says, "You know what? I want to make an improvement to my property, or I'm thinking of buying this and tearing it down and putting a new one." Somebody should just point blank and say, "You might want to consider that because here in the City of Burnsville, we're going to make you put a 20-foot vegetated buffer across your entire back shoreline." And that might deter some people.
Okay.
One last question.
Commissioner Benke.
And then, basically, going back to the original variance, you know, it was pretty clear that you, you were able to do something different with your property by agreeing to this variance when, when it was offered as a solution to making the home bigger and closer.
Okay, well, let me correct that. All that we did with that is we made our home wider. We actually, the information up here is wrong. We're actually further away from the street, and we're further away from the lake. And we were able to do that after the meeting and talking to Chris Leeny. He goes, "You know, if you would slide that over a little bit further on the lot, you'll be able to accomplish both of those things." And we agreed to do that. We were even going to agree to go over further than that, but it would have taken down three more huge oak trees. And on our lot, we had to take down six oak trees just to reposition the house the way that we did. And, and at that point, he agreed, "You know what, then? Let's just only go that far with it." And...
I remember the conversation. The only person that spoke to us was actually a neighbor that was disputing the property line.
Dean, our neighbor was disputing the lot.
That was a private issue, but I remember the application. Okay.
Yeah, I never spoke at the thing, other than sitting back here just saying, "Yeah, I'll take care of it with Dean."
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Questions of the applicant? I may have you come back up, but, okay. Thank you. I think at this point, I'll have Mike Hughes speak. Mr. Hughes, could you please give us your, yeah, your name and your address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Mike Hughes. I live at 1309 Crystal Lake Road East. I just have a quick comment about lake water quality, but first, I'd like to describe my experience. I was a member of the Parks and Natural Resources Commission here in Burnsville from 1997 through 2007, and then from 2007 until the present, I've been on the Black Dog Water Management Organization. And earlier last year, I joined the Crystal Lake Improvement Association. So I have quite a bit of experience with lake water quality, and wanted to mention that when I was on the Parks and Natural Resources Commission, we negotiated a number of these agreements to mitigate variances on new construction or replacement construction projects on Crystal Lake. And the vegetative buffers were a fairly common feature at the time. I'm not sure if that's still the case. I assume so. And I certainly learned a lot more details about this particular case than I knew before, but I wanted to mention that vegetative buffers do help to improve and maintain high-quality water in Crystal Lake. And I think that we should also consider fairness to all of the people who in the past have negotiated variances and who have followed through. Because, of course, the water quality effects of those are scalable. If one homeowner doesn't necessarily do that, it'll have a small effect, but if everyone doesn't mitigate the water flow, the stormwater flow into the lake, that would have a huge effect. So in this case, I leave it to you to sort out all these details, but I want to mention that, again, in order to be fair to everyone who has shorefront property on Crystal Lake, consider the fact that if you allow one homeowner to exceed the variances, it would be fair to let everyone do that. And in that case, there would be a big effect on water quality in the lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobson?
You don't have to state your address. I guess you can do 100 Civic Center Parkway if you'd like.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Daryl Jacobson. I'm the Natural Resource Manager here for the City of Burnsville. You know, I don't really have a whole lot to add. Deb covered a lot of it. I've been doing development review from the natural resources side since middle of 2006, around that time. And I looked back, and there was comments for shoreline buffers on many of these variance projects, and I do think a lot of them were installed, but our staff does not go out and do annual inspections. And so, as you can see from the pictures, a lot of them have been altered probably since they were originally put in. The other thing I would state is that the buffer certainly has a water quality role. It also has a habitat role for things along the lake. It's not just a singular purpose. And as... And as Commissioner Benke mentioned, when I was making my comments through the review process, it was stated about the, the fifteen-foot wide access path down, and at that time it was that the homeowner didn't know where the dock and other lake amenities would be, and so they requested to not put that on the plan, but to have that be determined at a later date. We agreed to that, and that we would come out and, at time of inspection, determine where they wanted to have their lake use and, and put the access in. So, at that time, it was my understanding that this was meant to be after construction, but I was not involved in their original meeting. I get involved once there's an actual application, and it goes to the staff review process.
Okay. Mr. Ja- Jacobson, do we, do we have different rules or requirements in place because Crystal Lake's on an impaired lake list?
No, this, I mean, there are some, yes, but for this particular standard, no. This standard applies to all of the water bodies that are covered under Burnsville's shoreline district.
Okay. And we certainly could have, because there's a little bit of shoreline that is technically in Lakeville on the south side, but has, that, that really has no variance, I mean, no reference to us, because they could do what they need to do for their portion of the lake.
Correct. I'm not sure exactly how many lots, but there is a small portion that are Lakeville property.
Yep, okay. And a lot of our, our ordinance are driven around protection of Crystal, of Alamagnet, Keller, Twin.
Yeah.
Lacklevon.
Lacklevon, yeah. Twin Lakes, yeah.
Okay. And this requirement's in place for the entire city?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Staff, questions for Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jacobson, as far as your responsibility is for Crystal Lake or any one of the lakes in Burnsville, once the review process is done, you're done?
Yeah, so we do an initial inspection, yes.
You're doing it after the house is built, or when do you do that?
Yes, and, yeah, right after the house is built to make sure that the requirements have been met.
So I, according to the background information, that inspection you did after the construction was when, as a follow-up to your visit, I think enforcement proceedings started?
Yes, our code enforcement department kind of took that information and, you know, now it's in their hands of, of enforcement. But yes, we, when we inspected the property, noticed it wasn't there, did meet with the homeowner, stated that they were not going to be putting the buffer in, and did ask for options of how to go about, you know, what they could do to not put it in. That's where this variance application came from. I believe I sent them to Ms. Garros in the planning department at that time to see what options they had to kind of pursue that, that avenue.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, other questions of Commissioner Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Darryl Jacobson. Has the DNR actually physically come out and seen the site or visited the site up to this point?
Not that I know of.
Have they seen the photos of the completed project up to this point?
Not that I know of.
Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jacobson, the discussion started out with mitigation of runoff, and then you threw in habitat, as being nice to. Has anyone looked at what is there in terms of it being satisfactory to mitigation? Yes, I know we want twenty-foot buffer and all, but does mitigation, is mitigation satisfied by what has been put in? If, as an alternative, because part of the applicant's application had to do with alternatives?
Well, based on what we've required on past applications and based on the ordinance, I would say no.
So the ordinance, by defining the twenty-foot buffer strip, doesn't allow for anything else that might be equally effective in mitigation?
If I could, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, there, when there is a buffer yard requirement, the applicant needs to submit a plant list for approval by our Natural Resources Department, and those plants are specific and they're native, native plants, so it's something different than grass. The approval is, you have to do the buffer yard, it's twenty feet, you can work with staff in terms of the plant materials, they'll approve a plant list. They will also work with the owner to find an area where they can access through that buffer yard to their docks. And we do have an approved plant list that was submitted for this, and what is out there now is not that approved plant list.
I understand that. My point is, the applicant implies that what they have done mitigates the runoff, which I think is what we're trying to accomplish with the approved plant list and the twenty feet and so forth. Has anyone evaluated what the applicant has done to determine if it meets the spirit of the law as opposed to the letter of the law?
Well, I have been on site. I looked at the property. At that, when I was there, I did not notice any rain gardens, I didn't see any on the plan. The, when I've met with the homeowners, they never mentioned rain gardens as they have tonight. So, based on what I saw, it was typical landscaping with the grade going from the house towards the lake.
If I could also.
Ms. Garros?
The ordinance also doesn't say that you can do a buffer yard or something else. It says you can do a buffer yard with plantings to be approved by staff. So the question is not, is something else okay? The question is, what does the ordinance say? What did they apply for? What do we have approved plans for? What are the multiple documents that we have indicating that there is a buffer yard? Do they meet it, yes or no?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions of Commissioner Workman?
And either of you could maybe answer this, but at what point in the application process does this occur? If I'm going to build a new house on Crystal Lake, is this something that's initially told of, of somebody that's going to build a new home?
You get review comments from staff. Obviously, the zoning ordinance is that thick, so you, just like you can't sell somebody a building code that you meet this, this and this. When they get their review comments back, which they did in this case, it said you need a buffer yard, you have to put the buffer yard in, they replied, updated their plans, showed the buffer yard, provided the plant list, and then just didn't want to do it.
Okay.
So yes, they knew.
And have there been any other similar construction, anything similar to this, either before or after with relative to, I don't know, a couple of years, this applicant? I mean, has, has anybody done a reconstruction project on Crystal Lake before or after this project? Do we know of?
There have been, yes, there have been.
Commissioner, the closest one in recent history, we did a tear down and a redo on Lake Alamagnet. It was a very weird lot, and we shuffled the house, because I remember they had to put in the buffer, and then it was going to change where they were going to have a seating area. It was a real pointed lot, and it was a complete tear down and, and remodel.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of Ms. Garros or Mr. Jacobson? Staff questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate everyone's comments this evening. Commissioners, your, your comments?
Actually, I do have a staff question.
Okay.
For the city attorney. Seems to be a comment that we're looking at the improper variance in terms of all the documentation here. Is there a way that you can comment on that?
I don't know what you mean by improper variance.
There's a variance that we put, that we granted them for their house construction, which was not completed or not compliant with that variance, but now they've applied for a different variance, which is to, after the fact, approve it. Sounds like they're, to me, legally, that they're trying to get around the first variance with this application, and that, I guess, is, I'm looking for a little advice that way, I guess.
They are seeking, Chair and Commissioner, they are seeking to avoid a standard termined condition.
Right.
That accompanies all variances as required by our shoreline ordinance.
Okay.
The shoreline ordinance is pretty clear, as Ms. Garros indicated, as Mr. Jacobson has indicated, that if you apply for a variance in the shoreline zone, you are required to plant and subsequently maintain and not mow a native vegetative buffer with plantings acceptable to the city. That was a standard condition in the ordinance. It was attached to and documented by the surveys and the application review on that previous variance. This variance is now seeking to be relieved from that ordinance requirement.
Okay.
You are right, in a way, it isn't after-the-fact kind of variance.
Right.
But it really isn't in the sense, it is a termined condition that was attached to the original variance, so it's a new variance from that previous condition.
That, that does clear it up for me, appreciate that. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Benke, other questions? Commissioners, discussion? I don't, I don't think, I don't have to have a, there's no public hearing, is there?
No.
No, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. You know, that's why I was asking for just, Commissioners, your thoughts? Commissioner Benke?
I, yeah.
I'm just going to go down the road.
I realize I came in late, believe me, I read everything here. I am in the business, I am a builder as well. I've operated, I, I was able to tell somebody last week, this is my forty-year, fortieth year, being paid to be a builder, and I've run into this many times. I've worked in the Minnehawha Creek area, I, I know how different areas I've worked in Prior Lake. I know how these things work. The rules are there for a reason, the agreements were there. I was here when this was approved. There was no question in my mind, this was part of the complete package, and I cannot support the variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, all of you are aware, I'm, I'm the dean of this commission. I've been here longest, the longest, and I've.
And we always point that out.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for acknowledging that. During my time here, we have had to address variances for Crystal Lake and Alamagnet and, and others. And I cannot recall at any time when we have approved a variance that will not include the twenty-foot vegetated strip. There were times when the pathway to the lake for docking amenities were managed and sometimes changed, the wisdom, that kind of thing. But I've always remembered, and I, and I thought when I asked Ms. Garros if this is state law, I always thought it was a state law that you had to have that vegetated buff from your yard to the, the lake. And of course, we all, we heard about the, the need for that for water quality. Crystal Lake, you know, is about to get out of that water, the one that they had us on for quite a while, because of the improvement of the water. And I think people who have, have installed the buffer, the vegetated buffers, they have all helped to make this possible, and hopefully, next year, we can get out of that bad water, and there's a term to use for it, I don't remember, but I hope we can get out of that. I, I will not be able to support the, the application for the variance, because in my opinion, the applicant knew of it from two thousand and fifteen, and is now just trying to change it. They were told about it, they, they submitted their plant species approved by staff, and now we are being asked to change it, and for that reason, I will not be able to support, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh, thank you. Commissioner Workman?
This one's a little challenging, but ultimately, not understanding or not seeing the ordinance doesn't create a hardship to allow a variance in this scenario, so I will be voting with the stack recommendation this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
I will not be voting as the ultimate, however, I, I have a.
I've always let you give your opinion.
Thank you. I have, as I indicated earlier, an issue with a hard and fast rule in ordinance not allowing for comparable results. And I don't know whether what they've, what the applicant has put in is a comparable result. I have, don't have that engineering background to identify that. I would hope that prior to making any final decision, that that be looked into. Is it comparable? Does it mitigate as desired? And that, you know, we hold off until that kind of, that kind of evaluation is made.
Thank you. Commissioner Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Conversely, with Commissioner Singh, I'm the newest member of, of this commission, so this is the first, first one of this, this kind that I've dealt with. But I, so I don't have also the benefit of the, the previous variance discussion, but yeah, I would concur with the sentiment so far, that it seems to me like everything is pretty clear in terms of what's, what's required under the ordinance. I do want to applaud the, the applicant's, it's beautiful, beautiful property, and I, I think it's a, it's, it adds value to the community, so I just want to say that as well, but I think I'll be voting with the, with the sense that seems to be prevailing right now, so.
Thank you. I think you hear a consensus. I, I do certainly understand, to a certain extent, the situation that you're in. I, I was here when the first, when the variance came through. I do hope you understand, in, in some cases, the city, when someone does ask a variance, there's a fair amount of stuff, you gave us the background, we don't know if a variance was required or not, and if you understand, we look at the information that's presented in front of us, we're an advisory board, we make a suggestion of approval or denial to the city council based on staff. And I, I do believe, I remember the application, and I do, you know, it, it does say it on the plan that the, the vegetation buffer would be there, and I do remember the discussion and standpoint of when or where the access lake could change, because those things kind of stand out to me, because those always scare me, when, when something could change, and then, because we try to finish things up front and have an application done and not have to go back and do something, so that did ring a bell with me, so I unfortunately also would be supporting staffs this evening, tonight, but I, I just wanted you to know a little bit about where my thoughts were. Commissioners, at this point, I guess I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. You did say you were the elder.
There's certain responsibilities to go with that, huh? Okay. Mr. Chair, I beg to move that the planning commission recommended the city council denial of the application for the variance, consistent with the recommendations for denial that came from the PNRC and the Black Dog, the DNR and the Black Dog WMO.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Singh. I have a motion by Commissioner Singh, I have a second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, and the motion carries. Ms. Garros, that'll go in front of the city council on.
Next Tuesday night.
Next Tu- a, a week from tomorrow night would be in front of the city council. We, we kind of have acted, so if you want to present to the city council, you certainly can, but that'll go in front of the city council a week from tomorrow night. Thank you. That brings us to the fourth item on our agenda this evening, and the fourth item is a public hearing. It's an application of Zack's Automotive for a conditional use permit for an outdoor sales and storage lot located at one one nine nine zero River Wood Drive. Eric, please, I don't want to mess up your last name, so.
Well, I will note, because this is the area in which my family comes from, we pronounce it two different ways, but I pronounce it Zwaiver.
Zwaiver.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Zwaiver, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This public hearing before you is to review the application from Zack's Automotive, as well as Matt Williams, for the request of an open sales lot at Zack Automotive's as well as Matt Williams, for the request of an open sales lot at Zack Automotive's place of business, which is 11990 Riverwood Drive. To give you some background on the existing development, why we are providing this is, they are not proposing any additional building or structural improvements here. This is to take five of their existing stalls and allow for car sales in those five stalls. So the lot itself is low over one and a half acres, shown there is low over seventy thousand square feet. Twenty thousand square feet is the building. This building was actually constructed back in 1971. That results in a, a building coverage of twenty, low over twenty-eight percent. Impervious surface coverage is about seventy-five percent, and you'll see from the photos, it's predominantly the building and the parking lot with some green space around the edges. You will note that the green space within the parking lot required is three percent, and in this particular parking lot, due to its age, there is no green space within the parking. The parking required, based on its current uses, and why I'm pointing out the current uses, is when we get to the conditions of approval, if the use of this area changes, that may change the use of this conditional use permit. But their current parking requirement is well over the, the parking that is provided. So this is the property itself, it's zone I-1, it is just to the west of Riverwood Drive on a cul-de-sac that actually shares that same name. It's about a quarter mile south of Cliff Road East, down towards the bottom of that second cul-de-sac, that's actually, gets into the property of the Burnsville High School. So it's an industrial park off of Cliff Road East, but is approaching the more public use of the high school. You can see here, kind of those similar descriptions, you can start to see the ballfields of the high school, but predominantly, it's other light industrial uses surrounding this property. They are showing here, in what is the southeast corner of the parking lot, that those five stalls would be used for outdoor sales. That actually makes sense for the way the businesses are aligned in this particular building. On the north side of the building is Shirts, Shirt Hub, and that's over half of the building, but it's predominantly warehousing and digital garment printer, having five employees. The middle thirty-five hundred square feet is a commercial roofing company, which predominantly does most of its work off-site, so this is offices and some storage. And then the southern portion, which is, this is the southern wall we're looking at, is Zack's Automotive. You can see that there is both parking to the east, or in front of the business, to the back is some parking as well, but the garage doors for the business where they do the repair is to the west there. And then you could see, due to pictometry, you could see very well within that fenced area, but the fence itself is actually opaque. There is some storage area allowing for parts and vehicles under repair on the south side of the building. I would like to point out, though, that due to the time of year the photography is taken, it may be difficult to see the trees, because the leaves are lacking. But on the west side, between this property and the property to the west, there are a number of trees on the south side, particularly back by where the garage doors are and that auto storage, there's also a number of trees. There are even a couple of trees just on the north side of this building, you can't really see the planter island in which those trees are located. To the east, between this and the property to the east, there, there is none of that type of vegetation, either trees or shrubs, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. So this is as if it's turned ninety degrees from the last photo we seen. So south would actually be to the left, north would be to the right. We see Shirt Hub there, to the very northern part, A-plus roofing, and then Zack's Automotive. This layout shows that, on the bottom of the page, kind of where Zack Automotive is written, that's facing the parking lot where the auto sales will be. You'll see there's the office in a lobby and another office and conference room, until you finally get back to the storage and bathroom, and then finally, the garage where the repair is taking place. So the parking stalls that wish to have the open sales is closest to that lobby and office, which is essentially the main customer entrance for the property. This is a plan of just the site for Zack's Automotive, lays out the same way, showing reception and office in the front, and the repair and garage in the back. I guess I should note, if you actually went out to the site, that the rear of the property is, is a little lower, a little more removed than the front, where it's the more normal parking lot. So Zack's Automotive shows here how they use their parking, both for their vehicles and for their businesses. Again, for the industrial use of this building, fifteen parking stalls would be required. They're showing right here, to the east of their building, outside their main customer entrance, they're showing currently ten parking stalls. They want to use the five to the very east to be used for the open sales. That way, it would leave the five closest to their entrance open for customers. This is a little better exhibit of the site to talk a little bit about both where the, they're requesting the auto sales to happen, as well as some of the screening and vegetation. Looking at this property, and I'll get to it in my next slide, it doesn't show that, basically, running along the east property line is an eighty-foot-wide natural gas easement, which even appears like part of that easement might go underneath the parking lot itself. That helps to understand that the landscaping is predominantly along the sides that are not a part of that easement. But this does show the little bit of a planting island to the north side of the building that also contains a couple of trees. For outdoor sales lots, there is a requirement for eight percent of the interior of the sales lot to be landscaped. You can see that the only portions of the building in the interior that is landscaped is actually around the building, not around the parking area. So looking at that requirement, there are a couple of conditions I'll get into here quickly, that we want the approval to include, the, first, that the applicant approach the holder of the gas easement, and find out if landscaping could be installed in this location. And then if that cannot be achieved within that easement, that they work with staff to adjust the landscaping and/or the location of the sales stalls to try to mitigate through screening as required by ordinance. This is the plat itself, so they are lot five here of block one of the Riverwood Industrial Plat Four. The red line is the outline of their property, that kind of more transparent red is the location of the easement. So it doesn't overlay exactly with the picture, unfortunately, but you can see that it's basically this area in the east side of the lot is where that easement is located. And then you will note that, because of that easement, there's actually a drainage utility easement that is right on the west side of that natural gas easement. And then up here is where it shows that that is an eighty-foot-wide easement that runs the entire way through the plat. So staff, following the public hearing, recommends that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the CUP to allow for the open sales lot at 11990 Riverwood Drive, with the following conditions. First, that the approval is limited to the five stalls that they identified. Second, that the applicant shall work with the owner and city staff to include that additional landscaping that we discussed, before the city signs off on the Minnesota Motor Vehicles Dealer's License. Third, that the applicant obtain written approval from that, the owner of that gas easement, to authorize planning and screening. And that if that easement is not granted, that they would work with staff to locate the storage of vehicles in another location where screening could be accomplished. And then finally, that this conditional use permit shall be revoked if there is no longer a major automobile, major repair business on site, or if the owner fails to have a Minnesota Motor Vehicle Dealer's License. So in that finding, the staff is concluding that sales associated with the repair makes sense that you expect additional automobiles at that business, but if the automobile repair went away, those kinds of sales wouldn't be expected to go with another non-automotive light industrial use. So with that, I'd stand for, any questions the planning commission has?
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Benke?
Could you go back one page? Nope.
Does it condition?
Do the conditions, yes.
Okay.
Okay. The approval shall be limited to the area outlined for five vehicles, so if they, a subsequent recommendation suggests that they could be moved, if they're moved, does this come back for, for, to have the CUP updated?
That is not the intent. The intent is more that, to limit it to, to five vehicles. We identify that, due to that easement, there may be difficulties gaining permission for landscaping.
Sure.
So the intention of these conditions are that the applicant can work with staff to meet the intent of the CUP, not necessarily come back, just simply because of the location of the five stalls moves.
Okay. And then if you could go to number four? So this seems to imply that if the business changes hands, the CUP continues?
If it stays a major automotive repair, yes.
Existing business.
Yep.
If it changes hands, but doesn't change its, its function, its, its business, basically. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick...
Commissioner Workman.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Zweber.
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 That's the other way.
Oh, okay. We'll come up with one more before the evening's over.
As far as screening and a potential fence goes, is that, I mean, are we going to go the width of five vehicles and then stop, so will there just be a freestanding fence on the outlining property line? Here, could you explain that to me a little bit more?
Sure. The section of the code that we're referring to, that the requirement is actually landscaping interior to the lot, so if no other screening could occur, staff would evaluate if a fence is the most appropriate screening, screening. But the intention of the landscaping is to look for vegetation first, before something as mechanical as a fence.
Okay. Thank you, that was kind of what I was hoping.
Commissioner Workman, I clarified the difference between an open storage and open sales lot, because there was some information in both, in the background, about a hundred percent screening, so. Other, I, I would like to make a small change to one of the variances, in the spirit of the ordinance. From a practical difficulty standpoint, I've been to the site and screening, and in, to try to help the applicant, because I, number one, we've had some applicants in the area that, we've done some display pads, and we have asked them to do a little landscaping. But I also, hopefully, the, our, our ordinance is, I don't think typically driven down to five parking stalls in a lot, so there's probably be an extreme to the condition. And with number three, at the end, I would propose a small change. If authorization is not granted from the easement holder, then the applicant shall work with staff to adjust the landscaping, or locate the storage of vehicles in another location outside the screening where it could be accommodated. That gives the applicant the opportunity to work with staff to, maybe puts a little bit of landscaping at the entrance into the facility or something, to meet the ordinance from a standpoint of additional landscaping. Because trying to move the vehicles around then starts to put them in front of other people's properties, or other rental properties. And so that would be a suggestion I would have, that I think that might ease this application's process, and I would be curious to see if I have commissioners that would agree with that, that suggestion. That, do I, I guess I have consensus?
I...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I would say that we probably want to do the public hearing.
We will, but I was, wanted to kind of get that out there, from a standpoint of, to clarify, I brought that up, because when Commissioner Workman mentioned the fencing, and there is fencing around the open storage lot, but this is a more of a sales lot, so...
Mr. Chair, I guess I did have that question. So this lot that's being highlighted right now, that is a permitted open storage lot?
It's, if I can speak, it is an open storage lot. We don't have any record of a conditional use permit approved for the site. However, it's very well can be an existing condition, it's a rather old site, old property. It meets our current code as far as screening of the storage lot. I just don't have any record if it's conforming or non-conforming.
I guess, given what we've been doing a lot lately, wouldn't there be some clearances that would be part of this application, then, is to try to memorialize that?
Rectify that.
And maintenance and other issues that tend to go along with it. Okay.
Other questions?
No.
Okay. At this point, I would, if the, would, commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? We may have you come up, but hang on just a second. I do think I'll hold the public hearing at this point. I'd like to, this application does require a public hearing, and at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing, and see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue, typically a neighbor or someone that's been notified of the, of the, of the public hearing. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, sometimes that takes a few minutes. And commissioners, your comments?
Mr. Chair, I also had a thought on the conditions. Basically, if we could go back to number one, I thought that my question to staff generated enough comment back, that I think that the text of, of recommendation number one could be, could be revised. You know, I think clearly you have an opinion on, on number three as well. I, I think we'd like to work toward this, but the, obviously, the applicant needs to be aware of this and approve them, or be happy with them, because he's the one that's going to ultimately be saddled with them. I'm basically suggesting that, that recommendation number one specify that it's for five vehicles in the area, in the area outlined, for some, for some of the same reasons you mentioned.
Okay.
I'm, in my reading of this, I'm a little, I was obviously a little confused about what it was actually trying to achieve. I, I think also, I would prefer to add a fifth recommendation, that the existing open storage lot be memorialized, and have the, I don't know, can we do that as part of this, is to, is to do the clearances? Or is that...
It's habitual here, all.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, would it, would it require some, something on the application, or can staff simply add the clearances for that existing old structure to bring it into, into compliance with the CPA? I mean, we're not, it's not in here right now, but wouldn't we, we'd want to add it in order to, to do the clearances?
Yeah, if you want to add it, you can.
Sure. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Singh?
Can you please ask Commissioner Benke, do you go back on number one? I'm not quite sure what changes you want to see on number one.
I thought I, if anybody, and then we'd get back, and he'd verify that.
Then we could go through, yeah.
Yeah. I thought I'd see if anybody has any other suggestions. Commissioner Singh?
No, that's, that's my...
Commissioner, okay. So let's, usually try to work through these, so, and we're going to try to, I'm going to have you come up in just a minute, so we make a change to, to number one...
Recommendation, number one, that the approval shall be limited to... Recommendation number one, that the approval shall be limited to five vehicles in the area outlined.
Okay.
And basically, that keeps, keeps the number at five, and it keeps the location where it's shown.
Yeah, I think that makes it better.
And my small change to number three was to give the applicant the opportunity to adjust the landscaping, or the location, storage of the vehicles to another location, so those two are kind of in conflict.
Right. And I think your goal is to say that if screening cannot be accomplished at this location, but the goal of keeping the cars at this location is there because of its proximity to the business, that other landscaping be done of approximately the same value.
That was, that was my goal.
Okay. And I think that probably gave Regina enough word, enough words to figure out what we're talking about.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
And then our fifth condition would be to acknowledge the existing outdoor storage lot and to maintain that fence.
That, make sure the fence complies and is maintained.
Sir, if you could, did we do a lot of stuff there, and why don't you come up?
Yeah, I just have a few questions or comments.
Go ahead, absolutely. Come up and please give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Yeah. Good, good evening, everybody. Thank you. Matt Williams, and I live at 11331 164th Street West in Lakeville. City Code 55044.
Go ahead.
So you had mentioned the condition one, you wanted to amend some of the wording. The five spaces that I'm asking for doesn't necessarily mean five vehicles. The state requires a minimum of five signed spaces for the auto sales dealer's license. So in the verbiage, I guess, I prefer to say that, you know, we have the designated five spaces, because most of the time, we don't necessarily even have five vehicles that we'd be selling at any given point, so that way, when I apply to the state for the dealer's license, that would meet the requirement that they have.
Sir, I think Commissioner Benkey's change is, he just would like to have, where you drew that the five spots would be.
Yes.
That it just says that's where they're going to be.
Okay.
They're not going to move.
All right, that's fine.
And so we don't get into a situation where you decide to put them in front of one of the other tenants.
Yeah, the other businesses.
That it stays there.
And that makes sense for me.
I think is, is his point.
Right. And actually, I would actually add two words to my, to my recommendation, and two, up to five cars.
Limited to.
Limited up, yeah, up to five cars.
Okay. And then also, on that same slide you're looking at, I would have no problem with moving the signs for the vehicles for sale to the back, that I guess would be the west side of the building, if there is an issue with the easement of the gas line, which I didn't know about until tonight, or reviewing the email that I received at the meeting here. So whatever works easiest with the city, I'm on board with.
Okay. And what we were trying to do here was give you some flexibility, so you could handle this with city staff.
Okay. And the other question I'd have would be, condition five with the fence, and then current clearances and complying, would that be at the expense of the leaseholder, business owner myself, or is that something the city just automatically do, and then let us know if there's an issue?
Typically, what happened, the ordinance requires that you have storage outside, that it's screened.
Oh, okay.
And right now, it's screened, and the purpose is if the fence were to fall down, or no longer actually provide screening, that, that you as the business owner would be responsible to maintain that fence.
Okay. Cool, fair enough.
And I think you're maintaining it today as a security fence.
Yes.
And so that would be the same thing.
Yep.
Okay.
That's pretty much what I had.
All right. Thank, yes, Commissioner Workman.
One clarification, so you're, the state requires the five lot minimum. You're not anticipating five, you're anticipating under five vehicles?
At most, it would be five. During, any given time during a month, you know, maybe a few cars, so. We're, I'm not looking to open a used car dealership, there are plenty of other locations I could do that at.
Okay.
I'm just, with the shop we have, looking at helping our customer base a little better by providing a service for them, you know, so they're not having to go elsewhere, we can keep the business in-house.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
No problem.
Commissioner Workman, just to clarify, the reason the applicant's in front of us, there's a checkoff box on the dealer's license that says must have passed all local zoning rules, so.
Hopefully, we pass it.
Commissioners, I think we have consensus. Would, I, at this point, I would stand for a motion.
I would make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the CUP to allow an open sales lot at 199, I'm sorry, 11990 River would drive with the following amended conditions as stated.
Staff, do you have, are you comfortable with those changes?
I am.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Walter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay, and the motion carries, and that'll go in front of the city council next Tuesday.
Great, thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much. It brings us to item number five on our agenda this evening, which is also a public hearing. Application of Chase Real Estate for a planned unit development amendment for a four-story mixed-use apartment complex with 172 units, 8,000 square feet of retail, underground and surface parking located at 50 Travelers Trail East. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Dean. Thank you for playing this evening with us, and you have the floor.
Good evening, chair. Members of the commission, I do want to point out that we do have the applicant in the audience too, in case any questions come up. This property, it's approximately 2.5 acres on the corner of Nicollet Avenue and Travelers Trail, Nicollet Avenue South and Travelers Trail East. It is surrounded by heart of the city, heart of the city planning unit development. Many or all of the properties that have been before the planning commission in the past have been often a planning unit development, that means deviations from code, or some concessions have occurred. To give you some background, again, it is part of the heart of the city. It is under a EDA development, and there's a TIF contract on the overall property. That is currently under, I guess, a concurrent path for amendment. As this process is going through, some changes needed to be made with that. Specifically, the original approval called for approximately 130 condo for sale units with anywhere from 8,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor facing First Avenue, which is, actually, this is city ride of way, so this is First Avenue here. The agreements are also with the current owner of the property, and so another reason for, for the change. This was part of a 2004 approval that encompassed the PUD that you'll see, kind of circled in yellow here, consisted of the Cub Foods that you see today, retail strip center, town homes, condos with retail and office and retail. The condo and retail really was supposed to, the vision for the corner, the site that we're reviewing today, was supposed to pretty much mirror what you see built for the condo retail area. It was, it was supposed to somewhat mirror, should I, I should probably clarify, the corner piece was larger in nature as far as number of units, and, and the retail was laid out a little different. I do want to point out that this site is in close proximity to Future Orange Line Station. There's two in the heart of the city. The closest one would be the future Nicollet Avenue Station, and it's also in close proximity to the Burnsville Transit Station. So we would consider this a transit-oriented development area as well, because of that This gives you an idea of the original architecture that was approved in 2004, again, kind of mirrors what's out there today. I should back up. This proposal did go in front of city council at a work session back in January, conceptual plan, and I just wanted you to know that, so, so you're aware of, of some of the ideas that were brought forward. The, so the proposal, again, kind of mirrored one another. The current proposal does look different as far as the architectural style, but the overall thought was that it would really balance on what's out there today. And I did mark that this is conceptual, as from January to today, we've seen some progression in the, the architecture, more refined, and plans have come forward. This gives you an overview of the 2004 approved site plan. U-shaped, I would call it, in nature, as far as the footprint of the building. Again, about 130 residential units were proposed, and retail was proposed along the east side of the building here at the ground floor. Underground parking was also planned as part of the original approval, that's part of the plan today, as well as surface parking. There is also somewhat of a courtyard feature as well on that ground level. This gives you an overview of the, we did a lot, a lot of comparisons, I would say, if you're looking through the report and look at the presentation today, 2004 compared to the proposed plan. This gives you a, a unit breakdown. Again, about 130 units for '04, and about 172, or 172 for the current proposal. The difference between then and now, there's a lot more one-bedroom units than we saw in the past, so that's something to point out. This is a platted lot of record, so no changes to the plat are proposed. This is lot three here. There is shared access throughout the property, maybe I'll go back a couple of slides to show you that. The original intent of the planning development was to have shared access, cross-access, shared parking as well. This gives you an overview of the, the site itself, specific to, to the property. The, the applicant is asking for some setback deviations that are highlighted in your report. The, along would be the west property line, right here, the building is as close as 8.8 feet away, and so that would be a deviation from code. There's also, just going to my notes here. City code minimum is 11 feet, and the 8.8 feet is at this break right here in the ride of way line. Majority of the, the setback along Nicollet Avenue is, is met. We do have also along Nicollet Avenue, the decks on the upper floors also require a deviation from code. Again, we require 11 feet minimum, some of those decks are five feet away from that property line. There, we have a build-to line of 20 feet along Travelers Trail. The applicant is asking for 21.7 feet, that's an increase to what we require. It's very minor in nature. There is a sidewalk, as well as ability for landscaping along that south property line, that staff felt comfortable with that change. Parking, parking underground, from a staff standpoint, we're counting 160 parking stalls that meet the legal with depth, as well as the drive aisle requirements. The applicant is showing the ability for some tandem parking, or double parking. I've highlighted a row here, which shows compact spaces in a tandem nature, and the applicant is also highlighting parking along this edge here, which, from a staff standpoint, when you scale them out, may be able to fit a smart car. We see it possibly as for storage for, for residents in the future. Overall, the, the applicant is asking for 237 parking spaces combined for what staff would count as underground parking, legal underground parking meeting ordinance, as well as surface parking on the site, indicated in this general area, parking right here along the north part of the property, and then on the east part of the property, these are spaces in front of the retail businesses. If you, let's see here, don't have that slide. Jumping ahead, I thought I had a parking slide, must be, oh, it's not there. So parking analysis, there's a lot of documentation listed as an attachment that you likely read through in your packet from the applicant, showing how a decrease in parking could be, decrease in parking's requested. There's also a analysis from staff based off of what was done in 2004, and what was approved versus what's requested today. There's also an, an analysis of, of, hang on, I think I have the slide. I apologize. Here it is right here. I'll walk through this in a minute. There we go. So there isn't, there's basically a deviation from code that was approved back in 2004, with the assumption that there would be shared parking, as well as parking perhaps available throughout the entire heart of the city. In 2004, I should back up. If you look at our city code, there is a requirement that says for one-bedroom, 1.5 spaces is required. For two-bedrooms, 2.25 spaces are required. And for your guests, you're required to provide half a space for each unit. If you did that analysis, whether it was, so in 2004, that would have meant 310 spaces were required. Approximately 234 spaces were actually approved as part of that PUD, so there was a deviation granted with that original approval. Now, that's if you look at straight city code. If you look at the heart of the city design framework, it specifies that parking should be 1.5 spaces per unit, and then four spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail. As years go on, it was envisioned that parking for commercial would go down to three spaces per 1,000 square feet of commercial. So you can see a couple of comparisons I added in, in a chart comparing the 2004 approval to 2000, or 2017 request. So on the high end, if you took straight code, it would be 422 spaces would be required. If you did the analysis based off of what's required in the design framework, 290 spaces are required. And if you look in the, in the staff report, I gave an assumption. And if you look in the staff report, I gave an assumption that there would be an 18% reduction in parking. That's similar to what was done in 2004. And so I guess, after saying a lot or kind of rambling on, what I'm trying to say is there is a history of deviations that were granted for Heart of the City, for this PUD, for this site. And there's available parking, not only on-site. There's the cross-access parking that's available. There's also availability within our Heart of the City ramp. People can park there up to 48 hours without moving a vehicle. We have over 300 spaces located just one block away. This is a future location of, or in close proximity, of the future Orange Line Station. There's other modes of transportation that are on the horizon that weren't available back in 2004. There's also a different, I guess... A different market than there was in 2004. So the unit breakdown and the number of bedrooms will, based off of today's standards, would generate less parking requirements than they perhaps did in the past. So with that, staff does support a deviation in parking. The actual unit breakdown, again, approximately 172 units. I do want to point out, the first floor is where a lot of the amenities are. Not all the amenities, but you have your lobby, a fitness and yoga center on the first floor, a yoga lounge, or I'm sorry, a wifi lounge, and the office or concierge located on that ground floor. But then amenities are also built in throughout the facility. For example, a sky lounge on the fourth floor. There. Landscaping. Staff's done an analysis of landscaping and feels that it meets the intent of the Heart of the City requirements. Around the building, there's a variety of perennials. Streetscaping is proposed to remain along Nicola Avenue, Traveler's Trail, as well as First Avenue. It's very amenity-rich, I would say, compared to the last approval in the courtyard. A pool is now proposed, as well as other features like a fire pit, covered trellis area benches, lighting around the sidewalks, grilling stations as well. Architecture. The building is four stories, again, which is similar to what was approved in the past. There are... And there is an entry canopy feature at the corner of the building. Retail is... Currently has projecting signs, which help create an inviting, I guess, atmosphere and help to add to the architecture. It's consistent with the design, Heart of the City design framework as well. Use of high-quality materials are proposed. We have a minimum threshold of 60%, kind of your premium materials. And they're at 69% combination of brick, composite panels, decorative metal panel, as well as some precast, and then detailing with window seals and varying heights as well. And I'll jump to the architecture. This gives you an overview of the proposed various elevations. This is south-facing, so this would be facing Traveler's Trail. You can see some varying roof lines, cornices adding to some detail. The... I do want to point out, there's an entry along Traveler's Trail for residents or pedestrians to access the building. That helps create that walkability element. The east elevation, this would be the elevation facing the existing Nicola Plaza. So this would be the retail on the ground floor. The west elevation, this would be facing Nicola. The north elevation, this is basically facing the courtyard. So there is an access point also off the courtyard. This is the access to the underground parking garage. And then the second photo is the eastern portion of the courtyard, it looks like. And then the western portion of the courtyard. The proposal, like I said, it was originally condominiums. And with the condominiums, I think there's an expectation that it's higher-end, that there was higher amenities when this originally went through back in '04. And the applicant wanted to ensure the city that there were still going to be, even though it's for rent, even though it's an apartment, that these luxury features would still be incorporated into this building. And here are just some precedent photos that they've provided. They also shared this with council at their work session back in January. So demonstrating the type of feel you can expect when you're out on the courtyard are shown here in their exterior amenities package. And then expected interior finishes, just to give you an idea of what the inside would look like. I do want to point out, in your background, you'll see information about a change in that ground floor, and I'll go back. A change in the... Would be the east elevation, the potential to eliminate the retail component. That was brought up late last week. And it was really a result of... Well, I'll step back. With projects, we often have a neighborhood meeting to... We encourage the developer, the applicant, to host a meeting to hear from the surrounding neighborhood. What are some issues? What are your concerns? How can we make this project better? Just a way to kind of introduce yourself and have that early conversation. About 20 residents showed up, or property owners, showed up to that meeting here at City Hall. And one of the property owners was a representative from HJ Development, and they own the Cub Foods and the retail. And they had concerns with the parking, the parking numbers, concerns with perhaps parking spilling over onto their site. And so after that meeting, we had a sit-down meeting with the applicant, as well as with HJ Development representation, and tried to understand, from a staff standpoint, what those issues were. It was a way for us to hear kind of both parties talk about those issues. And after that, or at that meeting, Chase had indicated, you know, to HJ Development, would it be possible for us... Would you be... I don't want to put words in their mouth, but would you be okay if we remove the retail and have it all housing? Would that help alleviate some of your parking concerns? And really wasn't an answer given, but I guess that is a good-faith effort. Chase Development said we can put together some options. And at staff's request, they did put together an option of rendering and a floor plan that showed the first floor converting to all apartments. And so that's something that has been, I guess, somewhat discussed. This occurred late last week, so staff hasn't had a chance to fully digest or evaluate that information. But what I can say, this did go to the EDC, the Economic Development Commission. And we did have some of that knowledge at that time. And the EDC recommended to retain the retail component. If you were to look back at the city council work session, their direction was to retain the commercial component as well. And after having conversations with Chase, they're open to being flexible and are okay with retaining the retail development. And maybe they can speak to that later. Joe with Chase is here. As far as the PUD, there are deviations that are requested. I do want to point out that an increase in density is requested for the site. And that's for the parcel specifically, on that 2.5 acres. The density is 68.8 units per acre. Staff does support this request. Reasoning for that, one, if you look at the overall PUD as a whole, it would be under that unit-per-acre count. This, as I stated before, is part of future Orange Line TOD area. It's very common to have increase in densities in close proximity to transit. There is a decrease in parking requirement. And I know although this number might scare you, the 422 parking spaces to 237 parking spaces, I do want to note that when you're thinking about this, think about it in the context of Heart of the City, those requirements, what was approved in the past, and that ability for not only shared parking, but off-site parking. I do want to point out that staff is not in support of a decrease in the underground requirement. If you recall from the slide, the applicant was showing some tandem parking spaces. If that parking is above and beyond the 172 spaces, staff is fine with that. But at minimum, staff felt that having one space allotted per unit was the right thing to do based off of past practice with this planning and development, based off of what we would require for any other apartment or mixed... Sorry, apartment or multifamily residential property. And I would say we've been pretty flexible in our recommendation of various deviations as well. There is an increase in height, maximum of 50 feet to 56 feet. And this is due to some of the grade changes that you see on Nicola Avenue and how we measure height. There's also a decrease in the build-to line requirement to the 8.8 feet. And that was pointed out along that west property line or Nicola Avenue. Staff is in support because it's pretty minimal in nature. Where the right-of-way kind of jets in is one of the few spots where this is required. A majority of that property line meets that setback requirement. A decrease in the minimum setback requirement for the first and second floor for the decks. Decks are certainly an amenity to the apartments. And staff is in support of that. And then an increase to the build-to line from 20 feet to 21.7 feet. Again, this is pretty minimal in nature. Traveler's Trail does have that sidewalk that kind of eats up a lot of that area. This will afford opportunity to add additional landscaping and provide that buffer to the building. Staff does recommend approval of the request according to the conditions below, that the previously-approved PUD, as applicable, shall remain in full force and effect. Staff is recommending that one parking space shall be provided with each apartment unit within the underground parking garage. That the plan shall be amended to include 120... I'm sorry, 172 unobstructed parking stalls underground. Or an alternative would be that the unit count could be reduced prior to building permit issuance. I didn't speak to this, but the... Many of the Heart of the City projects have an element of public art. We would like to continue to work with the applicant to incorporate some form or feature of public art, whether it's into the building design or perhaps in their courtyard. But we'd like to work with them on that element. City code requires that parking lot lighting be, or shall not exceed 20 feet in height for Heart of the City. And that's something that wasn't indicated, the height. But we'd like to work with the applicant to resolve that part of building permit. Sign permits, like any other property, are required to meet city code, and a separate sign permit application is required at that time. I do want to point out that throughout the overall planning and development, you'll see bannerets or small banners on light poles. And we want to afford that opportunity to the current applicant, if that's what they want to do within their parking lot, that they would have that opportunity. So we added that as a planning and development condition. The angle parking in front of the proposed retail shall be built as concrete. This is consistent with many of our other areas within Heart of the City. Pillsbury, I pointed out, Pillsbury Avenue, 126th Street, have the concrete parking. That access to Nicola Avenue shall remain right out only. This is an existing condition. There is a requirement that there be a gate along that exit point. It's currently broken. So we would like that to be fixed prior to moving forward. So actually, the owner of Lot 1, Block 1, is required to ensure that. We are working with that property owner to get that resolved. That access point would not be available to anything but loading and unloading type of vehicles. It's not allowed to be used by passenger vehicles for residents, tenants of the apartment complex. Park dedication fees are required as part of this proposal. The current amount, based off of the number of units, is 167,772. If that unit count changes, or if the commercial component changes, that number will also change. Just FYI on that. With that, I'm sure there's items that I forgot to discuss or skipped over that you might want more information on. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, also, the applicant is here to answer any further questions that you may have as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Miss Dean. I appreciate all your information. Nice presentation. Commissioners, since Miss Dean is at the podium, I would like to start with your questions of staff. Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Miss Dean. That was very informative. As far... The parking seems to be the biggest hurdle here. Is staff proposing, as far as adding additional parking, is it just to widen the underground portion of the parking to create those added stalls? Or what would be the solution to that?
If underground parking can be accommodated, that's something... Additional underground parking, I don't know if that's going down another... I don't know if that's going down another level, or going under the courtyard area or, or under the existing surface parking. If that's available, if that's an option, that would be, we would gladly work with the applicant to, to help accomplish that. Having one parking stall per unit and, and not to have to shuffle around vehicles underground would be an ideal situation for a luxury apartment building to afford that space tied to one unit would be, from a staff standpoint, would be ideal, would be consistent how we've always applied the code as well.
Well, I would tend to agree with that, and in kind of conjunction with that, if the Orange Line does get here, whenever it gets here, the, the parking plans for that station aren't, there isn't going to be a ton of parking with that station, so I would anticipate that you're probably going to have some type of overflow parking, not on purpose, but from that station. That's something that we're going to have to probably consider at some point in the future. So to assure that every tenant at least has a parking space, I think would be a good And I have a few more questions, and I might save them for the applicant, but is this building going to follow suit with the others that we do in the Heart of the City and name it? Is it going to have a brand identity of its, on its own, or will it be Nicollet Plaza 2.0, or is there any plans for that?
From what I understand from the, the applicant, they do have a desire to, to give it a special name. I don't think that's been disclosed or marketed, but that, I think, is something that, that's part of their branding that they're working towards.
Okay.
I don't know if a final decision's been made. I haven't heard.
Let me know if you find out. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Miss Dean, I have, parking is also a big concern of mine. If you can give me a breakdown, I would appreciate. Are we going to have a total of 290 parking spaces? Am I right?
Um, go back to that chart. With its 200 and, 237 spaces is proposed.
Okay. That would include 140 underground parking.
160 underground parking spaces, unobstructed.
How many parking spaces for the commercial area, the first floor?
Um, let's see here. So there's 14 on-street that are available for the use of the commercial, and then the additional spaces, the remainder, and I should have that. The remainder is really available to either tenants or to, to retail users on the site specifically, but again, there's a shared parking agreement overall, approved originally, was somewhere in the ballpark of, what, 1,000 spaces for the entire PUD, not including the townhomes.
Follow-up, will there be designated parking slots for visitors? Do you mean people coming to visit, people who live in that?
Not specified on the plan, no.
In, that's always a problem. Most, most cases, it's a problem. Somebody's having overnight visitors for that matter, you know, and they have to find a parking spot, and that usually is a concern. Also, in the underground parking, we have to have parking slots for people with disability. Is that calculated at 1.5 per unit, too? For, for one bedroom?
The ADA requirement is, is something that will be evaluated. The ADA requirements are part of the overall parking requirement. We don't necessarily differentiate from a planning and zoning standpoint, which ones are ADA and which ones are not. It falls into the overall parking number.
I would assume also for the commercial area, that will have to be taken into consideration.
Absolutely.
Okay. The, in recommendation, number one, with the banners, should we say banners or banners on the light poles shall be permitted, or bannerets? I mean, banners can be, can be huge.
Bannerets.
Yeah. I would suggest that we change it to bannerets.
Is that what we call them in the rest of the city?
Mm-hmm.
Is banner, okay.
That's all I have for now. Thank you, Miss Dean. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Levy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Miss Dean, Condition 8. I'm curious as to why Condition 8 is a part of this application. It seems to me that's kind of associated with another part of it, and why is it considered here?
Um, so the overall planning unit development is, is kind of in, in conjunction with one another, and we wanted to highlight that this is for Cub Foods, delivery trucks use only, or, or the, the market, and not like typical passenger vehicles, your resident vehicles. So we wanted to make sure that was clear in the report and any approval, that this continues for, that this is really for your semi-type trucks or, or delivery-type trucks for, for the grocery store.
I understand that. I'm just curious as to why that condition is put on this project effectively.
It's all one cross, yeah.
Okay, all right. You're suggesting 172, when you say unobstructed, that means no tandem?
Right.
172 straight-in parking slots?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Levy, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Walter? Commissioner Benke, that brings us to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, parking is the least of my concerns here. I was really disappointed to hear the comment about the retail. I think staff probably was, too.
About the possibility of removing it?
Yeah.
Overall, removing the retail would not be consistent with the overall Heart of the City design framework. It wouldn't be consistent with that 2004 approval. It wouldn't be consistent with the EDA contract that's existing or the process that it's going through right now for amendment. Certainly, someone could always amend a request or kind of go back and amend that, but from a staff standpoint, we ideally like to see it remain as retail.
Right.
And have that mirrored, kind of Main Street feel as you're going in and out.
Well, and I, I read that, and I was, had a hard time even with that part of it, because I'm not really seeing the mirroring to the extent that I think should be there. Quite honestly, the building, Nicollet Plaza building, has not only retail on the main floor on First Avenue, but it has it on Traveler's Trail, and it's not mirrored in this building at all. And is that 8,000 square foot, is, is that something that was negotiated that we're not able to, to work with, or is there some, is that just something that's being proposed?
8,000 is consistent with the 2004 plan. It, depending on which plan you look at, it says 8,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail on that ground floor facing First Avenue, and that's consistent with what the applicant's proposing. And working with the applicant, they wanted to propose a, a project that was similar in nature to the original approval, and, and they could probably answer more details about their reasoning and, and.
Sure.
Answer.
Okay. I mean, some of this, I know I'm going to end up re-asking the question with the applicant, but I think I wanted to sort of run through it with you, because you can show it here. If you could go back to that quote, "front door" that you pointed out, and which, which street was that a front door to?
Um, this right here.
No, not that one. I'm sorry. It was, it wasn't, it was the one on, on, I think it's the previous slide. It's, I think it's the one in the top elevation there. You want to point that front door out again?
Um, this right here.
Yeah, quite honestly, you know, operating in the design field, that is not a front door to me, and I'm really looking at that thinking that was really an afterthought. Is there, the design framework for the Heart of the City is, is, it's been developed to try to create a feel here that, I'm, I'm speaking instead of asking a question right this second. The question would be, what discussions were, went through staff to the applicant regarding the architecture and meeting the standards of the Heart of the City framework?
Um, we certainly, in our first meeting, referred to not only the Heart of the City code section, but also the design framework in any of our correspondence through comments. It was also referred to. It's something that, that's, I guess, always been part of the discussion.
I, I'm.
Commissioner, I.
I'm going to keep going.
Okay, but I, I was under the impression that was simply just an entrance to be able to walk onto Traveler's Trail, and the main entrance to the building was at the corner of Traveler's Trail and First Avenue.
I, I see, I see that, but that isn't what I was, that isn't what I was after. I'm not saying that this is the front door of the building. I'm saying that it simply is a portal in the wall and has absolutely no, nothing that says this is a front door.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify.
Right, and, and quite honestly, I think that because Heart of the City is a transit-oriented development, you have people walking to this building that need to be able to get in that front door, and it's not simply an exit from the lobby. It should be a front door to the street as well. Basically, by not having it face the street, by not having an entry face the street, it's sort of perpetuating the suburban development model, which this building, to me, is leaning toward. It's a great-looking building from an architecture standpoint. I don't want to, don't want to get that misunderstood here, but I'm definitely seeing a lot of elements here that are suburban in nature and not really appropriate for a pseudo-urban transit-oriented development. For the parking part, I know that our current ordinance requires 1.5 per bedroom. You know, quite honestly, I read through this again just while we were sitting here. How many units are in this building?
172.
There are 172 apartment units.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I think classically, a one-bedroom apartment typically is going to end up with two cars, and I think we've run into this before with other, I mean, when I brought projects in here for townhouses, it's been the same thing. That discussion comes up. You know, clearly, one per unit, it should be a bare minimum, and I, I'm agreeing with the other council members that have brought this up as well. When, when, when the variance to the setbacks were, were discussed with the applicant, I can clearly see why the 8.81 is being backed by staff. Can you tell, let me know what staff was thinking about with the deck variance that's going to project six feet over the sidewalks or out to the sidewalks?
Um, the, the decks are an amenity to the apartment units. They, they're also not one complete, I guess, flat building wall. There's airspace that's, that's part of that. The, it was reasonable, in staff's opinion.
Sure.
That, since it's not the entire building wall projecting forward, that we could accommodate some flexibility.
Do any of the elevations or the, or the artwork sort of show it better than a plan?
Um.
I mean, I can see them here on the plan easily, but again, there's no, the sidewalks aren't on here. You basically see the curb and really nothing else.
In my, maybe this right here.
Oh, sure.
We did ask for a cross-section, and that may have been included in your packet, but I think some of these side views show how the decks project, maybe.
I, I do see the sections here, and it, oh, I see. Okay, so some of them are recessed, there is setback to the building. Like you say, there, it's not just a solid wall, a, a flat wall. Okay, I guess, moving on, the parking came up frequently here, the design framework parking. We've used it in a number of areas in the Heart of the City. How successful has it been in terms of accommodating parking need?
Um, I think it depends on the site. It's my understanding that condo building, I'm drawing a blank on the name, where, JoJo's, that there's been some parking issues in the past there, possibly some of the other sites, parking spilling onto the Nick Burn Plaza. There is parking available, however, in the Heart of the City. That's why we have the parking ramp, the parking deck. There's also parking available at the education center. I know that sounds really far, but in theory, there's parking available. The, the character of Heart of the City is for a more urban environment.
Right.
So it's there. It's just a matter of, are people using it? How are they using it?
Right, and, and I think JoJo's is having a problem, the building at JoJo's is having a problem, because that building was part of a phased thing, and some of the parking is not there yet that was anticipated, and there's obviously yet to be developed there that could, could help that. So I'm really, that one I can see sort of as not being a, as more of an outlier, I guess, at this point. You know, we keep talking about the Heart of the City ramp, but so far, it's been given to the Orange Line, it's been given to the Ames Center, it's possibly being given to this building. At some point, it's going to run out, and, you know, I guess that's what we want, we want it used, but we, we, do we have any idea yet? I suppose we don't have anything on Orange Line yet to know how many, how much parking we're, we're even projecting for that, from them.
My understanding that majority will be walk-up is what they're projecting from a, yeah, from.
You're right. You, we were at that meeting when they discussed that. I apologize. Can you go to the landscape plan for a minute, please? Lot of landscaping, I guess, right up against the building. That doesn't seem consistent with the rest of the Heart of the City. And specifically, the landscaping in front of the retail on the First Avenue side is not mirrored by what's across the street. Is there a reason why they're showing so much, so much material right up against the building where the typical urban aesthetic does not have that?
Um, I would have to have the applicant answer that.
Okay.
Um, they're certainly providing a, a mix at base of the building that helps soften the building, adds color, year-round color for pedestrians that are walking by, and so, I mean, they can certainly, I'm sure they can speak more clearly to that, but.
But we don't have a requirement for it, do we?
Um, we do have specific requirements for landscaping, Heart of the City, base of the buildings, near entry points.
Right, but I'm, I'm just, just looking at what's across the street. I mean, literally, there's nothing at the retail component at all, and I'm just curious as to what's driving it here. If it's, if they're trying to use it to meet a minimum, or if it's simply add plants?
Just looking at my notes here. I would say it's to help accommodate code requirements and design framework requirements that we have in Heart of the City.
Okay.
But they can likely speak clearer to it.
Right, yeah, I'm trying to keep track. The public art, do we have public art on the building right adjacent to Nicollet Plaza too, or is it just, just other ones in the area?
There's, I would say, architectural features within the building itself. Other properties do have elements of public art. I think it's Grand Market Square, Grand Marketplace. There's a couple of statues within that area. Other properties have some form of public art as well. It's something that, if you look at the Heart of the City sign framework manual, is something that's encouraged as well.
Right, and I guess I was thinking of it because this building at the entry essentially to Heart of the City from the south, I mean, I can't call a parking lot for Cub Foods that, but this is really the first building you're going to encounter as you come north, come south on Nicollet. I did look really quick, and the. I did look really quick, and the angled parking on First Avenue for the retail being concrete, I saw that there was comment here that they were planning on rebuilding the road. I wasn't sure if that meant the whole road or just that half of the road, but I did notice that the angled parking across the street is asphalt.
That's correct.
Are we looking to have that upgraded for the other one and two? Is this part of the road reconstruction, or?
That, I believe, is not included. I don't know if Sarah, if you're aware at all. I know they're adding a, the final lift essentially to the First Avenue. We're asking for concrete for the parking spaces. I don't know if that's.
My understanding is they're replacing that whole road section, not just the.
So curb to curb.
That's my understanding, no, just the, just their, okay, sorry, just their side, but not just the top lift.
Right.
They are replacing the whole section.
So was there a, an error then made on the parcel across the street, or is this a new requirement?
Very likely it was in error.
Okay, okay. I think that's some of my stuff for now.
Okay.
So, okay.
Commissioners, other questions of staff? If none, I think at this point, I'd like to, I'd like to invite the applicant up. Just for the audience, we'll, we'll have the applicant present. Commissioners will ask questions, and then I will hold a public hearing after that for anyone that's interested. Please give us your name and address for the record.
All right, thank you, good evening. I am Joe McQuinn, I am developer, development manager at Chase Real Estate. We're at 2140 on County Road 42. I happen to live in downtown Minneapolis and reverse commute to Burnsville every day. So I have compiled your questions. I think I will leave the parking hurdle for last. The second one I had was naming, yes, it will be branded. I do have a name, I do not wanna publicly state it quite yet because we are branding it with our management team.
That was the easiest question to answer.
I know, it goes off the bat.
You got softball.
Visitor parking, I'll leave that for the parking hurdle and the ADA parking. The commercial, yes, it is staying, it has always been our intent. I guess I should mention, we have always, from the beginning, promoted this project as meeting the PUD and meeting the Heart of the City, which is why we went with the original footprint. So I do struggle with some of the deviations that we mentioned on plan because our footprint is nearly exactly, so if we are deviating, then the original plan must have deviated. But yes, the commercial last week was an idea that perhaps it was providing too much parking with our neighbor, HJ Development. It was a proposal that we would remove it, but I know that the city, we know that the city is going to approve it moving forward, and we are happy with that. The front door on Travelers, the design, as I think Regina mentioned, has evolved. I mean, what you're seeing is 95% there, but if you go back to the elevations, I will note that, that kind of four-story brick portion that is our main entry off the courtyard, see that one on the top center? We're going to replicate that at Travelers as well for more of a grand entry. I will speak that the courtyard is, unfortunately, people still drive, I mean, you know, we come around, and what I mean is that most people will come through the front door, which we're calling our lobby, which faces the parking lot, and plus, that's where all the traffic will go, and we don't have parking in front on Travelers. The one-bedroom has two cars notes, I, we'll get to that as well. The Heart of the City ramp that's open 48 hours, I would note that it is vacant very often. We're not counting on it for our parking, but it is very available. And landscaping along the building, we, we are meeting like the minimum setback, so we are close, we are, have an urban footprint, but we like to have tall grasses around our project, we're, yes, thanks for having that. Really, the design is now is having this grand entry towards, off the parking lot, which tall grasses, trees, and a decorative fence with masonry piers. I wish we had that rendered at this point, but we, we like to have a landscape project, and I know there is a requirement of a minimum percent of green and planted space on a property, so I believe we have met that. So, I will move on to the parking studies.
Joe, can I?
Yeah, you can object.
Ask a quick question first. I know, the, these aren't final mockups of, of the plan, but I did have one small concern on the First Avenue side for the commercial space, if we can jump over to that. Is, and you're the professional here, so this is just my, could we do the?
The elevation?
The, yeah, the elevation. Is there going to be enough room for signage within the capa- the capacity of what's there for commercial?
Well, our goal is, if, don't I have that sign diagram right there? We like the, you have it wall-hung, it's actually the preference of the Heart of the City guideline. We're trying to prevent the neon put on the face where we see all kinds of words and different color lights, so those signs are, I think, 30 inches by 30 inches, and we have it on a building that we have now, they're made out of metal, they're more of that traditional, classic, kinda walkable sense, so your question is, are we gonna have enough? Well, those hang off lateral, so I'm planning on having eight or nine of those because we're gonna have possibly eight or nine commercial suites.
If I can.
It's like hanging on a shingle.
If I can add, they will also have the ability, if they wanted to add awnings, you see that through Heart of the City where a tenant will have signage on the awning front or face. That may be an opportunity, or like a metal-type awning, and again, it's something that they'll have to work out with, future tenant may have to work out with Chase, but.
Is that, when you say awning, am I, am I, when I'm thinking of Jensen's, that type of signage?
Fabric cover.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, we may, it'll be at the discretion of the tenant, but we like to limit what they can provide, which is why we like the wall hanging.
It's your building, so.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if I may, I prefer the wall hanging, because if one business decides to have the awning, and the other one, two businesses down, decides to have, it will so be so inconsistent, it wouldn't be, it will detract from the appearance of the building. If everybody decides to have awnings, fine, but.
Correct, well, I'm at this point objecting to the awnings, fabric awnings. I would like to only keep it consistent with the metal signage that you see now, moving forward, so.
I don't think you have to object to the awnings, we're not.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, obviously, we will come back to the city and get approval if we want to.
It'll either meet the sign ordinance, or you would come back to us for a variance, really, one or the other.
Correct. So if I can, if the.
Before he moves on to parking, do we have any other questions? Let's, can, let's do that, let's try to get everything else taken care of besides parking, is that okay?
That was my last one.
Other commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Banky.
Thank you. Joe, have you looked at more than 8,000 square feet of commercial?
Yeah, we are providing the minimum, which is an 8,000-square-foot minimum rule. Why is because we do have a property four miles up, the flats at Cedar Grove. We've had it open for two and a half years. We have 13,000 square feet, because that was also a mixed-use commercial development required by the city, and we're, we are half-full there. We wanted it to work out, we were working with an Italian restaurant for over a year. Fortunately, it just, I don't know if it's a, a short-term decline in the demand, but at this point, the demand isn't there, and we wanted to stay consistent with only putting on the First Ave side. Now, it will wrap around on that Travelers End corner, but we're only providing the minimum because we really are about apartments. If this wasn't a PUD, we probably wouldn't be doing the commercial, because we do struggle with it. I know that our neighbor, HJ, also believes that it perhaps will not be successful. That's an opinion, but we hope it will be successful with the added people that we're bringing to the property.
Well, I have my own opinion that way as well, because commercial begets commercial, and I think that putting in the minimum in this case is selling the site short, essentially, that it, it, it won't have the, Heart of the City needs retail in order to survive, in order to grow, and the people that come in to buy that, you are bringing the people in to buy the product, believe me, but without the retail to, to, to be there, then people will get in their car and drive somewhere else, and maybe to the flats, or maybe to Burnsville Center or something else. And quite honestly, I'm really seeing a lack of, of the mirroring of Nicola Plaza along Travelers Trail, and, you know, it seems like adjusting your commercial could take care of your parking problem, and I, I do see that as an issue here.
I do believe, the parking does have a higher ratio that's needed, though, I think it's, for every 1,000 square feet, I need four stalls.
That's.
Every 1,000, yeah.
So, most of our units are around 900 square feet, and they need, let's say, 1.5 to two stalls, so it is an increase, but.
It's in a different place, though, it's not in, in the underground where you're really, where you're struggling with it.
I am, yeah, I will just, I will say, it is, I mean, it is risky, we're not retail developers, we're not getting it at Cedar Grove, and we do know that the Sherman property also has vacant, uh, commercial, that's been vacant for a long time. I mean, we have realtors on top of our team that help us try to fill up Cedar Grove, and currently, I, we're not going to risk more square feet. In fact, our perspective now is that there's not a lot of retail or commercial tenants who want a lot of square foot, so we're really focused on providing small offices for startup businesses. That's where we think we'll be able to fill the space up in the short term.
I, I noticed that too, that the building really isn't set up for a restaurant or anything else, there's no shafts, there's no, there's no ability for a, a restaurant to come in and provide the equipment needed to totally support.
Yeah, what, what you are showing that first, we would have columns, as in those wood frame walls would not all the way go, we're gonna be versatile by having only columns on that whole wood frame section, so in case we get an 8,000-square-foot retail giant, we would be able to provide that.
Right, but a, a restaurant requires ventilation and things like that, and there is nothing provided for in this building that will allow it to vent to the roof.
Yeah, and there are, as part of the PUD and our private development agreement, we do have restrictions that we can't provide certain restaurants, so unfortunately, we're not moving forward with the idea of providing restaurants.
Right, right.
Because of our neighbor that we're in development agreements with.
Okay. Now, you said that you were planning on updating the, the entrance on the, is that the Travelers Trail side?
Yeah, well, that has already been done, unfortunately.
Oh, okay, so, okay, but now, just to sort of clarify, is that truly a door that leads to the lobby, or is it an emergency exit?
No, that, we are providing, do we have the commercial plan on level one, Regina? Everything in purple there is common space. Of, of the units, we're providing about eight or nine of them are dedicated for common spaces, so that bottom purple space will be a clubroom, and we'll probably have our mail there, and we'll have a waiting space there. The idea there is that when you walk by Travelers, you can see common space, so that you can see, you know, the amenities that you may have if you were to be here, and then most of the amenities overlook the, the landscaped courtyard, the, the yoga, fitness, the other clubroom, the coffee bar, the private dining, the office, and then the second floor will have a mezzanine, work-from-home spaces, and then the fourth floor will have another amenity room.
So back to the first floor for a second, if I could, so that, that door actually doesn't access the lobby, it's really an emergency exit for the club space?
No, that's a, right where her mouse is?
Yeah.
No, that is a main door, that'll go right into a hallway that's flanked by a clubroom and flanked by mail, leading to a two-story lobby.
Okay, that wasn't clear on this, on this plan, it simply looks like one large space.
Yeah, it's a diagram at this point.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the office obviously has six offices in it, the lobby has various rooms in it, and the, yeah.
Sure.
At this point, it's a early phase drawing.
Okay. Regina, could you go to the commercial, the, the First Avenue elevation? The middle one, correct? No. Is that the, is that the?
This is facing First Avenue here, yes, the middle.
Okay, one thing I noticed here is, again, mirroring across the street, that Nicola Plaza, the retail spaces have significantly more glass to say storefront than you are providing here. Is there, is there some?
On the first floor?
Yes. If you look at, I, I, if you look at street, if you look at street view, you can see, but anyway, they alternate a, a smaller, you really, yeah, it's the, if you look at this image on the bottom right, if you see that arched area right in there? That area is essentially all storefront, and then in between, there are some smaller ones, sometimes they have doors, sometimes they don't. I guess, I guess you can see it a little bit in the elevation up above as well. Is there any work being done, since these aren't final drawings, is there any work being done to, to, to create more of a storefront feel here?
If you can go back to the elevation, Regina, thank you. I'm also.
The, the vignette might be better, because it does come up close.
Yeah, I mean, as of now, the architect's stacking, you know, kinda the window bays. I felt like we were providing quite a bit of storefront, I mean, in my opinion.
Right, and again, I'm coming from, from the, you know, the framework and trying to create interest, and part of creating interest in a walkable community is the ability to look into a store and see the product, same thing you were talking about with the, the, the apartment building, and it, it does feel like the commercial area is underserved, and perhaps it's, it's, you know, a little bit lack of work that you've done so far on it, but I'm definitely seeing an issue here with the current design.
My response would be, I, I do have updated drawings that have evolved, and I would love to hand those to you. I don't know how that speaks on tonight, but we have made more progress than we have tonight, in fact, I have more glass on the right side, because our concept is that on the right side's facing the river, we're gonna have more glass in the units, so the idea is that we have a, the more classic 1920s, '30s, lots of brick building facing Travelers, and as it faces the river, those two wings will actually, using an architecture term, decompose or whatnot.
Deconstruct.
Deconstruct, so they have more glass.
Right.
So I wish I had that updated elevation, I didn't wanna confuse anyone.
Joe, I do too, quite honestly. I mean, what I'm seeing here is, is good, you know, I'm, I'm really seeing good architecture here, I'm not bothered by the fact that it's not the identical building to the one across First Avenue. Believe me, it's, it's good, I'm just seeing some pieces to it that are lacking at this, to my point at this stage. Thank you, Chair.
Other questions?
Not right now.
Okay, let's talk parking.
Let's talk parking. Okay, if I can get the spotlight, here are my notes, I don't know if we can, or the.
Do you want me to go to the underground or the site plan, or?
No, this, um.
When you, if you put something there, the, the guy, it's amazing, see, it just, it's just, they make stuff happen.
Okay, very good, so I have 274 total stalls on the property. I forget what you had noted in Regina, I thought, I think it was different, but 274, and that is because I do have 197 stalls underground, I am, we do double stall, or what we call tandem, some of our parking stalls that you saw in the, and I have.
And then these here.
Can everyone see what I see? So the hu- the colored version are those double deep stalls, so I know what we're getting at is the one-to-one parking requirement. In effect, I know I have 100, I have 171 units, I know the 172, it's a small error, but I would like to say that we account for our two-bedroom units who are couples, yes, they have a more tendency to have two cars versus the one-bedroom units who are singles, and that's the reason why we do provide double stalls, because if I were to change this plan and make it more about getting to single stalls, I would actually lose underground parking. Does that make sense? Because I, in order to get to this stall, I would have to bring the driveline back down here. I'm, I'm trying to maximize the amount of stalls per footprint I'm available, in fact, we're actually parking underneath our courtyard. In fact, we're actually parking underneath our courtyard. We've expanded our underground parking versus the original development. Also, there are a few residents, of course, who don't own cars. Generally, they're the ones who rent our smallest units. We do have a few studio units that are very unique. They fit around elevators. People who want to live this lifestyle and get in at the, I guess, lowest-cost unit and use public transit. We don't count for very many of those, but we do believe there are those. And then I do have to mention, we do have model units. At Cedar Grove, we have two model units. They're always perpetually, the TV is on, the furniture is there, and we use those every day for our tours. In addition, I have to speak on occupancy. Currently at Cedar Grove, we have up the road, we're at 97% occupancy. It's the highest we've ever been. It's physically impossible to have a 100% leased property. There are always people moving in and out. Apartments may go vacant for a month or two. And so if I were to count for, if we were 97% full, we would have a 3% vacancy, which would equal five units, which then equals eight stalls. What I'm trying to prove to you is that even in the best circumstances, we are parking one-to-one underground if you account for those few stalls. Because I am really only talking about 12 stalls that I'm not able to meet underground. Even though I have 197 stalls underground, right? And I have 171 units, 159 of those stalls can be dedicated. So really, we're talking about 10, 11, 12 stalls that I cannot get one-to-one or dedicated for units above. And I'm accounting for people who may not have a car, or someone who won't park outside. I hope that makes sense. So my proposal tonight was, half of what your sack recommendation was, for the plan shall be amended to include 172 unobstructed or dedicated stalls. My response would be that I shall provide at least a minimum of what I currently have, 159 unobstructed 9-by-18 full-size underground stalls for units, in addition to a minimum of 38 underground double stalls for a total of 197. I believe I'm getting there with 197 stalls underground. We have plenty of data that we study all of our properties. This is one I provided for, I don't know if this can zoom out.
That was in our background.
Oh, it was? Okay, excellent. And this is the last thing I'm going to comment on for the math. The flats at Cedar Grove is up the road and has more two-bedroom units. And they currently have 303 total permits outstanding, because we give permits to all of our residents. There are 185 units, so they are 97% full. That is a 1.63 car ratio. If I were to take that exact math and take it to Burnsville, I would need 264 stalls. I'm providing 274 stalls. In addition to, I know we've mentioned that we have cross easements. We do have cross easements. I can technically utilize all of the 900 stalls on the Nicollet Plaza PUD. I don't want to count on those, because no one will ever rent an apartment from us if we have to tell them, "You have to park across the street," which is why every city we go, we technically, we always provide our data, because we know how many cars we need. We don't really want to provide too many. We never want to provide under that. So finally, if I were to use the actual mix of Burnsville, which has more one-bedroom units, okay? Which would mean likelihood of more one-person cars, I would need 246 cars on this property. And again, I'm providing 274. So I'll leave it at that for the parking. We're very comfortable with it. Like I said, we would never provide a, build a building such as this for higher-end renters if we couldn't provide a parking stall for everybody on site. Thank you. And I can answer further questions, sir?
Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? Okay, I'll probably have your backup. With no other questions of the applicant, this is a public hearing. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. Chris Pennwell, I'm with the law firm of Siegel Brill in downtown Minneapolis. I represent, actually, Ms. Dean and Mr. McElwain have referred to HJ Development. It's actually Nicollet Plaza LLC is the actual name of the entity. Same principles are involved, but I'll, when I talk about Nicollet Plaza LLC, it's what they were referring to as HJ Development. The concern of Nicollet Plaza LLC is the parking that we've been talking about. Nicollet Plaza LLC is, there's a cross easement agreement that was referred to. Nicollet Plaza LLC is the declarant under that cross easement agreement. And as the declarant, Chase is required to submit a number of plans to the declarant for approval. And that approval can be withheld if the plans aren't substantially in accordance with the plans that were approved back in 2004. And just to kind of cut to the chase, no pun intended, as things currently stand, Nicollet Plaza LLC is not going to approve this and believes very strongly that they have a basis for withholding approval. So regardless of what this commission does, they're not going to approve it. And so let me tell you why that matters to you. And a lot of that, it does go to the parking. So as you know, the entire area is subject to a PUD agreement. There were three parties to that PUD agreement. Originally, Opus, the successor is Nicollet Plaza LLC. KSH, which is the current owner of the property and has it under contract with Chase. And then, of course, the city. There were redevelopment agreements between the city and Opus and between the city and KSH. And those contracts cross-reference each other, those redevelopment contracts. KSH's redevelopment contract calls for two condo projects and a townhome project. And as you know, as Ms. Dean showed, the 2004 plans show 131 condo units and 10,000 square feet of retail. Actually, Opus purchased the property that, and then sold it to KSH. So this property did pass through Opus. And the PUD agreement requires a minimum of one underground parking space to be sold with each condo unit. And then there was also an ordinance passed back at that time, ordinance number 933, case file number 04-27. The city approved the zoning of this development for concept and development stage for construction of two mixed-use buildings consisting of retail stores, condominiums, a Cub food stores, store, and attached retail stores and 30 townhomes. So the project that Opus approved at the time and relied on in signing the PUD agreement and the redevelopment agreement, including the two, included the two condo projects and the townhome project. If I can get the Elmo, or whatever you call this, the projector. The HOC density is 21.78 to 5.56.92 units per acre. Back in 2004, what was approved was actually 52 units per acre for the approximately 130 condo units. There's 2.49 acres here, and so 141 would be the max number of units that could, that would be allowed under the HOC density. The actual parking, our numbers line up with what Ms. Dean said, 237 total stalls. That's using the 160 underground garage stalls that does not include the tandem parking. So our understanding from, from the plans that we've seen, 237 total stalls would be what's actually being proposed on the site. And then Chase has 172 units, so that's actually 69.08 units per acre, which is a 25% increase in density. Ms. Dean has 422 stalls. We have 441.3. I think it has to do with the latest plans we've seen have different configuration of one- and two-bedroom apartments. But we just counted it today, and it's 441.3 is what we come up with under Chase's current plan. And that would make their site 46% underparked. So this is a big issue for Nicollet Plaza LLC, because you can talk about other places that these cars can park when they can't find a spot on the site. But the easiest thing for them to do would be to park in the Cub parking lot. And we expect that's, that's what they're going to do. The, there's reference to the HOC design framework. Our architect tells us that the design framework hasn't actually been adopted. I don't, I'm not sure if that's true or not. But the, but the code, there's a reason why it requires 1.5 for one-bedroom, 2.25 for two-bedroom, and a half a spot for guests. And that's because that's, that's consistent. I mean, Commissioner Benke said you can, you can pretty much rely on that for each one-bedroom, there's going to be, yeah, each one-bedroom apartment, two cars will be required. So that's even more than what's shown in the code. The code also says that all of the residential parking requirements have to be satisfied on this site. And that's all of the residential parking requirements. So, I mean, we aren't anywhere close to having sufficient parking spots on this, on this site. And they're going to spill over into the Cub parking lot. That's where they're going to park. And that's the primary reason why Nicollet Plaza LLC is not going to approve these plans under the, under the cross easement agreement. Chase has not submitted the plans required in the cross easement agreement. As I said, there's even been talk tonight about new plans. I mean, the plans that we've seen have relied on 2.88 acres instead of 2.49 acres, 176 underground parking spaces with tandem parking. They've taught, they've said to us that they're going to rent the underground parking spaces, which would be a violation of the PUD, number one. But I, you know, some of these apartment renters, they're not going to rent underground parking. So if they don't rent underground parking, that's just more cars that have to find surface parking and that are going to spill over into the, into the Cub parking lot. I guess I'm also a little bit perplexed, because there were three parties to the original PUD agreement. And now there's really only discussion between two of the parties to the PUD agreement, the city and Chase. Nicollet Plaza's kind of been left out of this a little bit. To my knowledge, they were only really brought into this a few weeks ago. We had a meeting with the city and Chase last Tuesday. Again, to my knowledge, that was the only time that Nicollet Plaza's really been brought into this. We ask that this be tabled and not brought before the commission tonight so that we'd have an opportunity to give more input. It doesn't seem to make any sense for this body to approve something tonight only to have Nicollet Plaza, you know, not approve it under the cross easement agreement. It just makes more sense that there'd be more time to talk this through and try to come up with an agreement that all three of the parties to the PUD agreement are comfortable with. And, you know, I hate to say this, this is what attorneys do, and I'm sorry to have to do it, but I mean, we're moving down the road toward Nicollet Plaza having to bring a declaratory judgment action and let a judge decide if the cross easement agreement supports Nicollet Plaza's position, or, you know, or doesn't. And we don't want to go that direction. So we're asking that, as presented tonight, that the application not be approved. I guess one last point. I've heard Ms. Dean talk about luxury apartments. I heard Mr. McElwain talk about high-end apartments. I don't see anything in the staff's recommendation that goes to that. I don't know what guarantee there is that Chase will ultimately build, you know, luxury or high-end or whatever it is. So I'd like that taken under consideration as well. But the parking is the main issue here. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone else in the audience who would like to speak, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Melinda Mellonbrook, and I live at 150 East Travelers' Trail in the condos. And a lot of concern of the residents there is the traffic flow in and out of there, off of Travelers' Trail onto First and around in there. Right now, you come up to a four-way stop, and, you know, and you go left or go straight ahead. Is there going to be any kind of, like, a roundabout, any, the traffic, I mean, adding another 100, 200 cars in there, in and out of that building, if that's the only way into this new, new complex? If that's, if anybody's even, you know, I'm sure they have chatted about it, but it's just, there was no mention of it tonight or anything at all. We're just curious about that, too.
I think we can, we can ask that question about traffic.
And then, and then to the previous gentleman's point, too, we're kind of concerned about losing some of our parking as well, a lot, so.
Thank you.
But that's just a traffic issue.
Thank you very much for your time. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I guess I'd kind of like to start, in council, could you kind of help us delineate the line between the city's responsibility and this response, and the private relationship between the applicants and where our opportunity lies?
Mr. Chair members, the, Mr. Pennell laid it out fairly clearly, the cross-access easement is a private contractual provision. I would recommend that the commission analyze what you think from a, from a city perspective, you think is the right recommendation to the council. Will this work with the developer's proposal or not? Are you comfortable with the traffic and the parking and the other land use-related issues? We have a deadline that is, I believe, in May for the action on this and the extension. So there is some time. I will let you know that the council probably short a couple of members at the next meeting, so it's unlikely that it will be taken up anyway. It's possible that it might be taken up if you recommend it. But I think you should just do what you're comfortable with doing. If you want more time, take it. If you're ready to make a decision tonight on a recommendation, go ahead and do that. And we'll work out the ramifications after that.
Thank you. Commissioners, Mr. Benke.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that the planning commission continue this to allow the developer and the other parties involved to address the concerns raised by this, this board and the neighbors. Basically, including the architectural comments that I and others have made as well as trying to deal with the parking problem.
Mr. Chair, I would like to second that motion. And my reasons for doing so, listed them here. Number one, I am not satisfied with the parking arrangements being made. It's not very clear. The applicant seems to have information that we don't have, or more updated information. Number two, the... Number two, the cross-easement agreement, I think they should be consulted and be part of this negotiation process. I would like to see a traffic study done on this matter around here because I think the person from the other building raised a good point that, you know, they are concerned about it, too. I think those are my points, three or four points I have, my reason for seconding the motion to continue discussion of this application for, at another meeting.
I have a motion on the floor, and I do have a second. At this point, I would take all in favor of...
Can we discuss this just a little bit more before we take a vote?
I have to, I have a motion on the floor.
We can discuss the motion.
Commissioner Workman.
That just totally took my whole thought process away.
You're too young to add this.
I had it all here, and then we did that, and they lost it.
Commissioner, hang on just a second.
Chair, the traffic study, I guess I want to, if I can ask for clarification, like, what are you thinking for traffic study? Is it in regards to parking, for circulation? I'm not sure if it will necessarily warrant a full-blown traffic study, and maybe our engineer can maybe speak to kind of when a traffic study is warranted, kind of your baseline threshold and, 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 based off of their expertise.
My reason for this is we are, we're going to have a building with 170 or how many units. Obviously, there'll be additional traffic in that area. We're going to have that commercial space. That will bring in more traffic. Guests will be coming in to visit those people there, bring in more traffic. We don't, I know that area. You're going, the person who testified said about the stop there, you know, you can either go straight, you can turn left, and we don't know with all this, the additional traffic that will be coming in there, is it safe? What's going to happen? So I would think that not so much the parking, but more the flow of traffic. That's what I would like to see, and probably, I don't think that would take much to give us a report and let us know about the traffic.
Mr. Chair. Hang on. I kind of lost it, so I pushed, Commissioner Workman, you had asked to speak.
Well, and I would just like to speak to Commissioner Singh's concerns that this planned unit development has always been here. We're talking about a difference of, I think, the condos was at 164 units?
About 130, 129 to 131.
So there is a bounce in occupancy unit-wise, but there was always going to be activity on this corner, and that's why I question if what traffic study is really needed because I think that the city's probably been prepared for this since 2004 with the amount of research they did to develop this corner. I don't know the legal ramifications of the cross-easement. I do know that that Cub Foods parking lot sits empty or, it, there's parking in that place, and that doesn't justify cross-easement parking, it doesn't justify anything, but Nicollet Plaza LLC is going to benefit from this building directly in their retail strip. And so I am a little disappointed to hear that they're willing to say, give us what we want or leave it an empty lot. That actually is a little frustrating, but if the commission believes we need to continue to discuss this and do a little bit more homework, I would be willing to vote in that direction.
Mr. Chair, may I react?
Yes.
The traffic study is one of three points I raised, Mr. Chair, regarding seconding the motion to continue discussion on this application. That's only one. I mean, I can live, I can live without that, but the other thing, the parking is critical. This, the engagement of the other party should be, is critical. Otherwise, you're going to end up having problems in the future. I think, I don't think they're saying, I mean, listening to the council, I don't think he was saying that, give us what we want or nothing. I mean, they need to be engaged, and it's only fair that they are engaged.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Levy, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Levy, did you have your hand up? No, Commissioner Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the motion. I mean, I think there's plenty of issues that have been raised here. The parking issue does seem legitimate, and the traffic issue, too. I mean, we didn't really discuss it here until after the public comment. I mean, I drive through that area quite a bit as well, and I think we need a little more explanation as to, you know, throwing that number of cars there. So I will vote in favor of the continuance.
That's true. Commissioner Benke.
I would presume, as a point of discussion here, I would presume staff, I would presume that there was work done regarding traffic and amount of cars and things done as part of the original framework back in 1999. Whether or not it's still valid or not, I think is debatable, but yet, this area is designed as a high-density product, and I think that the parking area, the parking issue is one thing, and I'm having trouble with it, too. I think the traffic is something that, it's currently appears that they're just going to tie into what's there. And if I look back at the original framework, there was a road, First Avenue actually went all the way essentially right across where Cub Foods is front door right now, and that would have gone out to another road. So right now, the development that is there created some of this problem. So just a point based on what was originally concepted for this area.
Anything else, Commissioner Benke? Okay. For me, I won't be in favor, I will, voting to continuous, but I realize that's kind of an irrelevant vote at this point. I don't completely understand the traffic difference between 130 and 171. I would depend on staff to tell me in the past, and our process, has that triggered an additional traffic study or not? And so that would be, I guess, a question that I would still have, but it's truly a difference of, and there's been a lot of numbers mentioned tonight, between 130, which was the original condominium number, if I remember correctly, and the current proposed 171. So there's a 41-unit difference, and does that threshold trigger a traffic study change or not? Is something, I guess, that hasn't been answered, and I don't know if that can be answered.
And what I can say, I can't speak for engineering staff, but whenever a project comes through, we go through a checklist. Is it complete or incomplete? Does it have a site plan? Does it have a landscape plan? All the elevations, building material samples, civil plans, traffic study is one of those items that's evaluated if it's needed or not. And likely, our city engineer would have brought to the developer's attention through a comment letter that a traffic study is needed or a traffic analysis of some sort is needed, and that's something that was not, was not highlighted, was not brought to the attention. I don't know, Sarah, you have anything additional to add?
No, I don't. We can look into that further and make sure that that box was checked and see if there is a need for further evaluation.
So for that, and I would like to see, I would not just be in favor of a continuance, but I believe that the difference between the private parties, the city needs to stay out of unless our council had told us differently, and I believe we could have maybe worked out some sort of agreement this evening from a standpoint of parking, you know, whether it was one-to-one or not. I would like to have seen, typically, I like to vote to try to move applications forward and come up with some sort of solution. So we do have a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded with, for the motion, unless there's other discussion.
Can you reiterate what the motion was?
My motion was to continue to allow the applicant and the neighbors and the city to review the architectural points I made, as well as the parking and the effects on the neighbors.
Does the city have any authority in reviewing the parking beyond the requirements into the easement that Mr. Pennwall discussed?
No, we do not.
So is that, we're not considering that as part of the continuance? Is the cross-easement parking just the state?
No, it's the applicant working with the neighbor to satisfy their concerns, but the issue here, to me, there's parking issues inherent to the current design. There's architectural issues inherent to the current design. There's drawings that show things that we haven't seen, and those items by themselves suggest a continuance to me. And, you know, I think you guys know, I'm sort of...
Mr. Chair, what we heard from the applicant?
Wait, I'm sorry, were you...
I was just going to say, I'm, well, I just was going to finish by saying, you know, I've been studying the heart of the city since Greg Conack gave me this book in 1999, and, you know, to me, it's a bit of a passion, obviously, but yet, there's things that we have to be available to the applicants because it's their land. I get that, but yet, there's still things that we can ask of them to conform with what the vision is there so that we end up with something when they're done and gone that we can be, that works for both of us.
Is that...
Period.
Commissioner Singh.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, in my opinion, there are too many inconsistencies from what Ms. Dean presented and what the applicant was up there. There were things that were new to me, that I was not privy to, and I would like us, when it comes back before us, that we get a more updated report so we can make an informed recommendation to the city.
Commissioner Workman, other comments? You had a question.
If we do want to continue this, this is still going to go before the city council in a week? It will not?
Mr. Chair, I ask you to call a question.
Yep. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Was that a four to one?
No, I voted, I said it, well, with the consensus of the commission, if that's what...
It was four to one.
Okay, thank you.
And from a continuance standpoint, that won't go in front of the, that won't go on the agenda. Okay. The next item this evening is item number six, which is a discussion on performance standards for conditional use in our one, one-family residential zone. Our presenter is Ms. Garros.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would the other lines move, given the late hour, move this to another night?
Nope. No, you would not.
We have a, we have a, we have a motion this evening to postpone item number six on our agenda this evening to a future meeting. Do I have, do I hear a second? Second, I have a second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to updates, number seven, and real quick, I just needed to everyone know you weren't here. We did make some changes in the 2017 work plan, and I have got copies of that, and I will be working with the city council tomorrow night on that. Okay? Commissioners, any other updates this evening? With that, I would, I would entertain a movement, a motion to adjourn. Second, a motion by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much for everyone's time this evening, and have a safe drive home. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.